Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting of the Planning Commission of July 20th, 23.
Recording in progress.
Oh, sorry, you want me to do that again? Sorry. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yep, Jansen.
Hi.
Kelly.
Here.
Pfeffer.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Chair Swift.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they want to make? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Jenna.
Second.
Jansen.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Pfeffer.
Hi.
Newton.
Hi.
Chair Swift.
Hi.
So I'm gonna read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of the Planning Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Okay. I'm gonna go on to consent calendar. There is... There are no items on the consent calendar, and I'm gonna go on to presentation of a resolution of appreciation to Norma Fregoso. And Linda, did we ask Norma or invite Norma?
I believe we did.
Okay.
But I don't know if I heard back from her.
Alright.
Yeah, we were gonna do it, you know, I told her we're gonna...
We're gonna...
But it got canceled, I said we're gonna do it in August.
Alright. So I'm gonna read the proclamation. A proclamation of the Fairfax Planning Commission of the town of Fairfax commending Norma Fregoso for her service and contributions to the town of Fairfax. Whereas Commissioner Norma Fregoso has served the citizens of Fairfax as a member of the Fairfax Planning Commission twice since she moved to town in the late 1980s, first February of 1993 through December of 2000, and again from May of 2016 through March of 2023. And whereas Norma Fregoso worked tirelessly and in the best interest of the community and its residents as the chair of the Planning Commission in 2017, 2000, and 2022. And whereas Norma Fregoso has reviewed and acted on planning planning issues that ran the gamut from the expansion of the Fairfax Theater in 1996, approval of the first legal medicinal marijuana dispensary in June of 1997, fence height variances and encroachment permits to to adoption of the Formula Business Ordinance and accessory dwelling unit ordinances, conversion of the Java Hut drive-through coffee stands to a brick-and-mortar permanent drive-through coffee shop, and approval of the Victory Village project providing 54 affordable housing units for seniors, as well as review and action on revisions to cannabis regulations and many, many, many private residential projects. And whereas Norma Fregoso has stood unbendingly for the principles of good government, environmental protection, community, public safety, and the preservation of Fairfax's small-town character. And whereas Norma Fregoso has decided to retire from public service on the Planning Commission and has not applied for another term to spend more time exploring the town she loves and the world. And whereas Norma Fregoso leaves her position as a Planning Commissioner with a heartfelt thanks of her fellow commissioners, the Planning Department's state staff, and the citizens of Fairfax. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Fairfax thanks Norma Fregoso for her dedicated service to the town and declares that the town of Fairfax owes her a debt of gratitude because she gave freely of her time to make Fairfax a better place. So, remind me Linda of the process on this.
You're gonna all vote on it.
Okay.
On adopting the proclamation.
Do we want comments from the public at all, if there are any?
If someone has any comments, or if you guys want to comment? And I don't suppose Norma's zoomed in, okay?
Okay, I'd like to open that up to the public if anyone wants to make a comment on Norma's proclamation? Or anyone out in, on Zoom?
I do not see anyone on Zoom except I would like to make a comment that I very much thank Norma Fregoso because she is the one that connected me to the Planning Commission and the reason why I'm here assisting you today. So thank you, Norma, very much.
Thank you, Norma, for that. Then I'm gonna bring it back to the commission and ask for a vote on the proclamation.
I see Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Sorry, Commissioner Newton has her hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to make a comment how, how much I've appreciated being on the Planning Commission with Norma and how much I've learned from her over the years with all of her vast experience and, you know, particular insights into this community and our quirkiness and, you know, she just really personifies giving back to our community and it's just been a real pleasure and I'm sorry she's not staying with us. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Newton. So we can have a roll call vote?
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi.
Thank you all. We will get this to Norma after, okay. Right. So now we're gonna have open time for public expression. This is the time for anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters not on tonight's agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Anyone may do so, and we will limit presentations to three minutes, so I'm gonna open it up to the public for members in the room initially, if anyone has any public comments. Seeing none, are, is there anyone on Zoom that would have any comments?
I see no hands raised on Zoom, Chair.
So I'm gonna close, open time for public expression, and we're gonna go to our public hearing items, and the first one is 109 Broadway, application 2222.
Okay, so this was first reviewed at your October 27th, 2022 meeting, and the Planning Commission continued this application and requested the following from the applicants and staff: A complete site plan, A landscaping plan drawn to scale showing proposed planting locations, plant species, initial planting size in relation to existing trees, Existing landscaping to be removed to accommodate the new plantings, An elevation of the proposed fence along its entire length Showing the sections that will be metal and the sections that will be wood panels. The original submittal was for an alternating type of fence. A rendering of the fence showing what the fence and the new landscaping will look like in the relation to the neighboring residences and fences on either side of the proposed fence when viewed from the street. The applicant's landscape architect, they hired a landscape architect, they surveyed the property line so they really knew where it was. And the landscape architect with input from his clients proposed constructing an eight-foot-tall wood-framed corrugated metal fence along the lumberyard rear property line, along with also maintaining most of the existing trees. They believe this will provide substantial screening of the lumberyard site. The use of the wood-framed corrugated metal fencing in a natural rust color will create an articulated structure presenting a pleasing facade along the Spruce Road right-of-way. As an alternative, the applicant has indicated that they would consider a plain brown color for the metal fence panel if that is preferred by the Planning Commission. The design will comply with the required design review criteria along with the fire-hardened decorative panels proposed at either end of the fence, and will be fire-resistant. Staff heard many comments prior to the October meeting that the corrugated metal paneling does not age well. The commission can consider including an additional condition in the resolution approving the fence height variance and design review permit as follows: The fence shall be maintained in good repair by Fairfax Lumber. Failure to properly maintain the fence will result in code enforcement proceedings being taken against the lumberyard to restore the fence to its original condition. Please note that the manufacturer's website indicates that the corrugated metal panels have a warranty starting at 25 years, and that warranty can be extended depending upon which finishes are used for it. So the only new vegetation that the applicants are proposing are two 24-box holly-leaf cherry trees, one at each end of the fence planted on the lumberyard side of the fence. The six London plane trees are being retained, as are one valley oak, one coast live oak, and one Oregon ash. Eleven black acacias are scheduled for removal because they are fire-prone and listed in the town code as an undesirable tree species. Additionally, a tree of heaven, which is in an advanced state of decline, is scheduled for removal. And finally, two valley oaks, a cherry plum, a peach tree, and one California bay need to be removed because they're in the footprint of the proposed fence. Project description includes a drip irrigation system. Staff has included a condition in the resolution recommending approval of the project that the system be designed by the landscape architect, and its installation shall be overseen by him, and the system shall be controlled by an automatic timer. Neighbors have requested that some type of screening plants be planted along the fence, but they're, the applicants are not proposing that. They did include, one of the pages of the plan show green areas that are, those are the only areas that you could plant without violating either fires requirement that you keep 10 feet on either side of the street, free of vegetation, or PG&E's limitation on where you can have landscaping. At the May 22nd, 2023 Tree Committee meeting, a majority of the Tree Committee voted to recommend the following two action options on the requested tree removal application to the Planning Commission. So the first option is to deny the application and direct the applicants to resubmit a revised fence location that does not require the removal of any trees, or two, approve the application except for the removal of tree number four with the following conditions under the authority of town code of the Fairfax Tree Committee: Replace the removed trees at a minimum one-to-one ratio. Replacement tree shall be a minimum of 15-gallon size. The tree shall be planted thoughtfully so as to maintain the existing character of the street. The timing of the planting of the tree shall be planned so as to minimize the amount of time between when the trees are removed and when the replacement trees are planted. It's not clear where the Tree Committee believes a one-for-one replacement of the trees could occur. If additional trees are planted within the right-of-way along the property frontage, properties, parking spaces could be removed, and the business's ability to manage the landscaping will be difficult due to the area being open to animals that eat plant material. Planting additional trees within the lumberyard property may be possible, but it also might disrupt business operations. The project ISA-certified arborist has provided a written statement in response to the Tree Committee recommendation that the approval of the requested permit should include replacing the trees at a one-to-one ratio, and I quote from his, his report: "The site does not provide adequate growing space to support the establishment of 17 new healthy trees, and such new tree plantings would create an undesirable fire ladder fuels per fire-safe Marin guidelines for defensible space." His opinion is that the site is fully landscaped by the existing London plane trees, the coast live oak, and the Oregon ash tree that will be retained along the fence. Therefore, we're recommending that you conduct the public hearing and that you move to approve the application, application 22-22, by adopting resolution 20 20-22-30, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Thank you. Yeah, there's one question. So the plans indicate those green zones close to the fence, very narrow, that could be planted.
I believe that.
What is unclear to me is, are they going to be planted?
They're not proposing to plant anything outside the fence at this time.
Okay, thanks.
So... I mean, you can double-check that with them, but I don't believe they are. They didn't provide any kind of landscaping plan for that area.
Yeah, I did not see it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Thanks. You talked about adding language about maintaining the fence and the, because, it sounded like because of the concern about the metal not aging well. And, is that what I heard?
No, I couldn't hear what you, what your last couple words were there.
The metal, the metal in the fence not aging well?
Yes, that's, that's been alleged by, you know, people look at the side of the metal building that fronts on, you know, across from Sixth School Street and see how it's not being maintained, and their, their fear is that the fence is gonna go the same way.
And I have been, I'm on the record as saying that that's my favorite building in town, partly because of the way that metal aged. So my question for you is, when you talk about in that language you're adding about maintenance, you're talking about preventing the natural aging of the metal as opposed to repairing structural, you know, things that fail if, if something were falling down. You're talking about the appearance.
Yeah, maintaining it the way it looks when it's installed, but that, but that's not something that I included. It's just something I put out, yeah.
Right, I get that. Okay. So, and then in terms of the options that we talked about with respect to the trees, the first option is have them come back with a proposed fence location that doesn't require the removal of any of those trees, right?
Correct. Yeah. That was what the tree can...
Linda, I'm sorry, can you speak closer to...
Yeah, that's what the Tree Committee, that was their first recommendation.
And so in your view, is that physically practical, I mean, are we talking about jogging the fence or literally moving the whole thing? Is there a way?
You know, I, I wasn't at the Tree Committee meeting, so I'm not exactly sure what they meant.
But I'm asking you about where the plans currently have the fence, which is gonna...
Oh yeah, I mean, you can always jog the fence around it, it adds cost, you know, and it, and you either jog the fence out into the right-of-way or you jog it into the lumberyard and take away space from the operating lumberyard area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
The, in, in the packet, Linda, there's minutes of the Tree Committee's May 22nd meeting, which appears to say they recommend a one-to-one replacement for the trees. Did I hear, I didn't hear that from you, Mase, but I probably just missed it.
Yes, they, they recommended a one-to-one replacement.
And is, but the proposal doesn't do that?
No, uh-uh, because the, the arborist doesn't, doesn't believe that that one-to-one replacement will be healthy for the remaining London plane trees and the other trees that are being retained. It's too much crowding, is what he said.
No matter what the species.
Uh, that seems to be what he said, yeah. I mean, I did, yeah, that was what he said, so...
Any other questions from the commission for staff? Okay, then I'd like to hear from, if anyone wants to speak for the applicant. I don't know if the landscaper or anyone is here that wants to come up and speak? And if you can give your name when you get up there.
Yeah, I got it. Is that working? Okay. Hi, I'm Gary Roth, landscape architect. I was hired to help with this, and sort of mediate in a way, this project. It's a, from a design perspective, it's been relatively simple, and, and from a constraints perspective, it's been actually more and more complicated. So, one of the reasons I jumped in is they just asked me, because I'm a longtime customer there. I also happen to be good friends with a lot of the neighbors across the fence, and so I was kind of excited to help try to figure all of this out. And that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm doing, dealing with all of this. I started going to this place when I was five to get wood for my whittling, and I picked up roofing for my garage when, when I was in my 40s, and I still go there, and it's, and I hope I can keep going there until, until I'm too old to work on my place. I was not asked to weigh in on dust management issues, and I know that they're sort of intertwined with some of this and to that, and I do have thoughts, and we have had discussions, but I understand that there's a subcommittee to focus on that issue. And so I'm here to talk about the fence and the constraints involved with the corridor for the fence. I reviewed the correspondence from the neighbors, I've reviewed code clearances and code requirements. I've coordinated survey work, as you've noted, and identified, helped to identify the property line, existing tree locations, and set up a consulting arborist to review all the conditions that seemed fairly obvious to me, but I, we, we do need to document it well. And it was, I think, done so. An intro on the fire code, I heard you talking about tree crowns and tree clearances. There is, you do, in today's world, you do need clearance between crowns of, of new trees. I cannot, as a professional, propose a new plant, a new plant that will grow up into the crown of an existing tree. On any project, a fire inspector will come by and ask to remove fire ladder material. Everything along that corridor is fire ladder for substantial heritage-sized London plane trees that line that street. So it's complicated, and it's, it's heart-wrenching to see an old fence interwoven with vegetation have to get pulled out and bring in a new swath of something. It will age. I, I hear talk about not letting the new fence age, but any fence will age, a wood fence will fade and turn gray. So I think we need to qualify that sort of requirement in some, some respect. So an intro on the fire code clearances, there's a horizontal clearance requirement as well from the edge of the road. That's 10 feet. That also happens to coincide nicely with the neighbor's desire to maintain parking. Those little crevices of green that I put on the plan were to show how little space there was for any new substantial planting that would effectively provide screening. Those are anywhere from 12 to 18 inches wide. And anything higher than the fence starts to become fire ladder fuel when you start to talk about crown separation issues. So immediately, I was in a bad place with my friends across the fence, and I, I felt that, because I would love nothing more than to specify the hedge that was requested originally. The vertical clearance and crown separation on new and existing plantings, we've talked about. The pyrophytic vegetation, the acacias, they are pyrophytic. I see that the, I did see the Tree Committee, I apologize that I was not able to attend the Tree Committee meeting because I would have liked to have a little bit of a debate in that situation. Those acacias, we noted every stem to be removed on the plan. They feel like trees. They are clumps, they are sprouts from an existing, a series of acacias that had sprouted, been cut, and sprouted, been cut. So to qualify every single one of those stems as a tree, and then to correspondingly ask for a one-to-one replacement of a hazardous tree on a lot with no room to replace them, seems difficult and challenging, and I've talked with ownership, and we actually had a chance even to walk around a bit and try to identify more than the two spots that I have currently identified on the plan. I think we've looked at anywhere from an additional three to five might fit within the yard spread out, not necessarily along that line. That corridor is unfortunately fairly full from a code perspective. And then, and just to clarify, those tree removals, there were some errors and some misstatements about some of the removals being because of the fence location. We tried to keep the trees that were in good, healthy condition. So there's a valley oak with really great form up, that will clearly get above the canopies of the others. There are some that were topped, and then are re-sprouting up into the canopy of the existing trees. And those create long-term hazards, both from a safety perspective, because you get a weakness in the trunk, as well as fire. And so there's just a series of those issues, and it's hard to really be clear about it until you walk, walk that corridor and look at the tangled mess. There are some existing oleander that I'm certain we can work around, because nothing can kill an oleander. And if the neighbors wanted to put more in, they could, you know, it, but it's at the risk of the fire department coming in and asking them to be cut away, which I've seen happen in my own neighborhood. The new fence metal was used in order to use best practices for fire safety. Discussions with fire inspectors, I know Augie, the president of Fairfax Lumber, and I've worked on big burns up in Santa Rosa and Kenwood area on residences up there. And the way fire traveled between houses was along the fence lines, the old wooden, dry fence lines. So I'm told that it's code in San Diego that you can't have a wooden fence. There are currently fire inspectors that won't allow you to connect a wooden fence to a house. So you need five feet of non-combustible away from a house. That's not the situation here. But I think Fairfax Lumber is trying to both be fiscally conscious with their decision. I think the metal, it actually happens to be less than the wood, also more maintainable. And we've shown on our plans that we have a segment of beginning and the end of a two-foot wood topper to help break up the mass of an eight-foot fence, because there is a neighbor with an eight-foot-tall wood fence. And it feels really tall. It's a wall. And so, to that end, we tried to show an option within our main elevations of what it could feel like with a little bit of wood at the top. Let's see, I think, I think ownership could, would be open to an all, potentially all wood, but I think it comes at the risk of fire and additional costs to them, and cost burdens are an issue for them. They have in discussions with Augie and watching the operations there, over the time I've been working on these issues, it's pretty clear to me that it's a challenging cash flow situation there with, with employee, with the employee ownership, with the constant need for equipment, and, you know, and they're running it, they're making it work, and and they need, and they do need to plan in large fiscal outlays, and to them, this fence is a big fiscal outlay at this moment, and they've, they've budgeted for it at this point, to some degree. I know that they have annual payouts for their employees that have to happen. They've got electrification, an electrification requirement coming up for their, all of their forklifts and trucks within, I can't remember how long, what the window on that is, but it's a, it, they're projecting a lot of fiscal impacts on their business, and they're worried about where that's all going. So they're just being cautious with what they can commit to at any one time. And so I think they're trying to get at all of these issues one step at a time. And I'm hoping that we can kind of work together with the neighbors moving forward from here. I unfortunately didn't really get the go-ahead to meet with the neighbors until very recently, and we had a good conversation. And I think there's work to be done on some of the bigger issues. But I think it would be nice to put the fence behind us and move forward with, with things like that. So I, that's, I think that's about all I have to say on the subject. I'm happy to answer questions. And thank you for your time, appreciate all your time on this.
Thanks. Oh, you might wanna just stay up there. Questions for Gary, and let me just start, because I just have one. Can you explain the selection of the metal color, the natural rust? Was, you know, from a design perspective, because I know there was also discussion of another color, but why the option for the natural rust color on those panels?
I actually do not have a strong, specific answer on that. I... that fence design came out of discussions with ownership. And it was a panel they selected and I liked. I thought it looked all right. They had a big sample. I think that modeled look can kind of disappear under the shade a bit more. It's less monolithic. It'll sort of pre-aged in a way. I don't have an issue with going to a singular dark panel either personally. But yeah. Does that help?
Right. Thanks. That answers my question. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I have a question about the trees and I think it was mentioned before that's in the comments. You you noted that you looked at keeping the trees so that they don't interfere with the fence or at least a number of them. There are five trees noted that are in good condition, but they have to be removed because they are in the fence footprint. So my question to you is why does the fence not jog around them and you keep those trees? And that that's been mentioned in different responses. So.
Yeah, that that was. I'm not sure which specific ones we're talking about.
I can give you the tree numbers if you if that means something to you.
I can pull up the plan and look.
Yeah, it's a three, four, eight, A B nine and 19. There are two valley oaks, a cherry plum, a peach and a bay.
The the valley oaks also happen to be growing up into the canopy and that I don't think was made clear enough in the arborist report. They're they're literally like up into the canopy, straight up into the canopy of of the of the plane trees. One of them was topped and and I don't know why that didn't come up in the report as well. I'm I don't have the I'm trying to get to my plans, but what were the other? What were the other trees besides the valley?
So there's there's two valley oaks. There was a cherry plum.
The cherry plum is a wild. The cherry plum is just a wild weedy plum that's a mess on top of all their lumber. So it's one of those ones, the little tiny plums at the blue jays.
Well, I'm going by the report. So right.
Understood. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the other one is a peach.
Yeah, similar, right? I mean, they've got a lumberyard with product and to have a bunch of sticky fruit on it doesn't really work. And it's in they're a little bit inside of the fence, as I recall. That fence corridor, well. The construction footprint of the fence corridor is difficult to really know in the field until we run string lines. Does that make sense? It's a thicket. And so what's in the footprint and what is not, isn't super clear. But things that were on the interior that were creating issues. They they're just they're creating issues and I don't think they would help with any of the larger issues regarding.
So in in summary, there's other reasons to remove those five.
Yeah.
Not just as noted.
I apologize that we didn't get that further clarified in this process, but yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you.
I have I have one more question for you. Are there species of trees that could be planted that would not grow naturally up into the canopy that would remain low trees?
Well. Well, there's large. I would just call them large shrubs, small trees. Yeah, sure. In fact, the prunus that we're showing gets about 15 to 20 feet tall. There's a beautiful example of it right around the corner on Azalea and in scenic corner of Azalea and scenic. It would probably work fairly well. But I I don't know what the we would have to look at what the vertical clearance is between what the mature height of that because you don't want to plant a maintenance problem. So if you planted a most trees are going to be in anything that we're calling a tree that's going to get above the fence line. So now we're talking something in the 10 to 15 foot, maybe 20 feet tall. And so you're you're going to get near enough to the canopy that you're within. You know, they want they want separation between canopies. They don't want overlap and you'll get that with just about anything that we're calling a tree. With otherwise, we're just introducing long term maintenance issues that and shearing. And once you start sharing, you start creating more woody fuel within the within the fabric of that tree. So I I guess the answer is yeah, kinda in terms of the situation. On the planting on the interior along that edge is their lay down space. So it gets it gets pretty tricky, pretty quick.
Yeah. So as a landscape architect, if you had a client that came to you and said, hey, I want to green up the outside of this fence. Is it? Is it possible to do it with the current layout of the fence?
With the current layout of the fence?
Yeah. And the property line, is there enough room there to do it?
Someone willing to, well. I would say I would say it would be challenging. There's a couple of issues. It's an eight foot fence that will now be creating a dark shadow. Right? It's kind of northish facing. And so you'll struggle with anything that anything that you want to actually cover the fence is going to want to stretch for the light. And so you'll end up with kind of this woody lanky thing that might get up to the top. So I probably I I'm not sure what I advise them other than, you know, a creeping vine that sticks to the metal kind of thing. Is, you know, like a ficus or Boston ivy, that type of thing. But then you're starting to get into things that'll rot out the fence, you know, over time. Yeah, it is a unique condition. I I can't say it's something that I deal with on a daily basis. There's always screening issues. There's always trying to hide things and I I tend to ask people not to depend on vegetation to hide their structural issues because you can't depend on vegetation. You you just can't in that situation, like make it look nice.
So if you had to accommodate the desires of the tree committee and do a one to one planting. What would you do?
Well, I would want to have a debate about whether it's actually 17 to start start with. I honestly did not realize that the tree committee would consider a one to one replacement on a pyrophytic weedy plant, which also has high, high pollen content, which is a whole nother separate issue, but yeah, I mean, I'd search. We we searched around the yard today. We we looked for pie. I walked around with the president of the of the group to to try to figure out where where we could really look for some high branching spots and we, you know, we've got the two and I think we came up with maybe about five spots that jumped out as good potential spots that not without the problems because we'd have to clear. There's a huge blackberry patch along the black back end. I don't know what we're going to find when we pull it out. A lot of that corner, a lot of that corridor along the rise and spruce is filled with acacia roots. And so you'll actually have a lot of trouble even just digging a hole to plant anything. So it's it's a challenging situation and I I'm not. Yeah, I there's not. There's not a clear cut answer where you can put 17 certainly, and I wouldn't pretend to try.
Okay, thank you.
What what I would do instead is say, let's. I I'm not sure what I would do instead, other than to stay, try to figure it out in the field, honestly, like pull a string line and figure out what absolutely has to come out. But most of it's acacia. And any fire guy is going to want that out. So and I it's not ideal. I get that. A lot of trade offs in this business, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Commissioner Newton?
Yep. Thank you. So I think, you know, there's two concerns being addressed here. One is getting a fence up so that the neighbors can have some relief from the dust as quickly as possible and then making sure the design works so that it's not just a big imposing fence and all the trees are cleared out. Are there any of the design choices? You know, we heard the tree committee's proposal to do the one to one replacement. I think we heard from you why by my count, 11 of those trees are not actual trees that would be replaced, you know, just stumps. How many of those sorts of design choices, you know, I understand the trees have to come out before the fence goes in have to be made or or sort of determined in advance of getting the fence up and, you know, like you said, walking the fence line and seeing what really can be done in terms of replanting.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, you know, right now we have, you know, we're considering part of this packet is a design review permit for what's happening to the site in terms of vegetation and landscape in connection with the fence. Is there any of those? Are there any of those sorts of decisions that don't need to be made right now where we're getting a fence height variance so that they can get the eight foot fence in? You know, understanding that in the process, once you see where the fence is actually going in, you'll have a better sense of how much clearance there is to get more things replanted.
Okay, I think I get it now. Yeah. Well, for starters, just walking with the neighbors the other day, seeing the old talking about looking at it a little bit with a little different eye. And I do always appreciate multiple perspectives on all of these things, but seeing the swath of oleander and realizing that doesn't have to go anywhere. And that's that's kind of in the middle across from a couple of the neighbors and that doesn't have to. I don't think that has to go. I also, there's a lot of of and I haven't done a hard ID on some of these vines. But there are some potentially native vines that are just interwoven with the fence. And my sense is that the level of weeds along that fence line as we'll we'll you cut a swath down, you pop your fence in. Right? And a lot of stuff's going to come back that is hard to predict. And it's going to be the sort. It can be just a little bit of a wild edge on both on both sides because it's hard to maintain along a fence line like that. There's birds dropping stuff and things come up. So there's a lot of unpredictability to what will sprout. But there I think the oleanders are an excellent start. The neighbors seem like they'd be willing to, you know, keep an eye on things on that side of the fence, but it's not a maintainable situation on the outside of the fence for for the lumberyard. And pull and pulling it inward in order to do more planting is just in some ways impactful to their bus to their business, to their square footage of where they can lay things down and move around in the yard. So I don't have a clear idea on beyond, you know, a lot of the clearing of the of the tree of the things that we're talking about are just large stuff, right? There's but there's a lot of small stuff popping up in there that doesn't have to go if it's not in the way. And I think there's more interest. I didn't realize, I guess, that there's more interest in softening the fence than there is and getting things to come up above the fence. And to that, and I think a partnership with the neighborhood on how that can happen would be a good thing. Because it's not, I think Fairfax would probably be willing to run a dripper under the fence for whatever they wanted to keep alive over there. But there's a lot of things living there without any irrigation too. So does that help?
Yeah, no, that
Little mushy, but sorry.
Yeah, no, that gets somewhat to what I'm what I'm asking, getting at in. Because one of the options here is a recommendation that no replacement trees are required to ensure the good health of the remaining trees. And to the extent that that's the recommendation that the planning commission moves forward with. Are there choices that York or, you know, Fairfax Lumber is going to make in terms of getting the fence up that would preclude getting a few more things in down the line?
No, I don't think so. I think things will be much clearer to everyone once we get that, get the fence in and there and there's some clarity to where there's space. It's really, it's kind of chaotic along that line right now. There's the there's mesh everywhere and there's stuff intertangled and it's it's and a lot of stumps. So in terms of like where a post can go is going to be challenging. They're going to reneed they're going to need stump grinders. I mean, I know they've budgeted for the fence. I don't know what the cost of removals and stump grinding and things like that are going to do to that cost, but we've been trying to contain the cost as much as we can. So.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to open it up for public comment on this item and we may have a group here, so we will look to keeping comments to three minutes. So if whoever wants to come up first. And you just state your name.
Yeah, my name's Peter Scott, live at 20 Spruce Road. Part of the 20 Spruce and Spruce Road here. This has been. I just want to make really clear just a couple of things. We're all going to be a little redundant here, so I'm going to keep it short. I hear a lot about Augie's money problems. It would be nice just if anybody could just say, sorry, bro, can't afford it. I would love to say that all day. So it's a little confusing to me how that keeps coming up when we haven't seen any kind of money problems. It just seems a very easy thing to spit out. The problem with the fence is that it's never been maintained. I don't know if you guys have ever seen the fence. Have you ever seen the fence? It's embarrassing. The owners of the property have never once maintained it. So when we're talking about roots and trees, it's on them to have taken care of that for years. This has been going on for 20 plus years, 20 plus years that we've been fighting this. The other thing is the fence isn't a solve for the dust. It's not a solve for the dust. I know it's not the time or place for that, but the big issue is the dust. It's causing health problems. I had to pay $1,000 to get a polyp pulled out of my nose surgically. The surgeon said that was due to dust dirt when we talked how in the world did this get? I'm sorry to be disgusting, but it cost me $1,000 because I breathe in dust all day. We all have filters. Our houses are just buzzing with filters all day long. Cleaning filters every weekend because of Fairfax Lumber. The amount of money that we spent at Fairfax Lumber over the last 15, 20 years could pay for 10 fences easily. So I'm just want to put it in your heads. I don't know anybody else who just says can't afford it. I might start trying that myself to see how far I get with that. It's a little frustrating. Thanks.
Thank you. Next individual?
Hi, thank you, you guys. My name is Suzie Bergen. I live at 30 Spruce Road. One of the five contingents from the neighborhood here. Just going back a little bit. Peter's right. We the neighborhood has been complaining for over 20 years about primarily the dust issues. Also noise and the fence has not been up kept. It's been, you know, shoddy and it's an old barbed wire fence. Last year, we were awarded by the town council subcommittee that was supposed to be a working collaborative group over the last 10 months. And that subcommittee never got activated. Chance was trying, as far as we could tell, we were hopeful that we could all get together and work together and, you know, solve these problems together. We don't want a hardware Fairfax Lumber going anywhere. We love them in our neighborhood. We're not trying to harm them or shut them down, but we are trying to take care of ourselves, our properties and our health. And we were really hoping the subcommittee could provide some relief and really get this kickstarted in a positive way. Our first opportunity to meet and talk with anybody, we talked with Chance twice this spring. He came to, we have regular meetings on the on our in our on our road and our community about this. Chance came to two and then last night we were Gary made us aware that Augie was allowing for him to come and speak to us, which we were so grateful for. And and this is great, but now here we are the night. This is last night. Now here we are tonight and I think a lot of us are a little bit hesitant to let you guys approve something based on town's recommendation that we haven't really had a chance to wrap all of our heads around. We had a really good working group conversation last night and we felt like we made some strides, but there's still a lot to talk about. This is about the dust. The the fence does not prevent the dust from coming into our homes, our lungs, our noses. On our cars, it's everywhere all the time. So as lovely as a new fence is going to be, the primary concern is the dust. the primary concern is the dust and the trees are what give us some recourse for that right now. So when we had the tree committee meeting in April, May, was that? May? Nobody showed up except for us. And so the tree committee got to hear all of our arguments, all of our concerns, all of everything. And they, I think, awarded us those two, those motions because they hurt us. They felt bad. They walked the yard. They know what we're dealing with. Okay, I'm out of time. So I'll just wrap it up by saying if this requires a continuance, we'd be happy to do it that way so that we can continue to talk with Gary and maybe even Augie, if he's willing to do that. So we can come to some resolution as a group. Thanks, you guys.
Hi, everybody. Brian Bergen. I live at 30 Spruce Road. I want to thank everybody for hearing this out. I appreciate that. I want to thank Gary for his time last night, Augie for being here, if he's still here. I appreciate everyone willing, like, like Suzie just said, we'd like having Fairfax lumber in the neighborhood. It's great working on a project, walk over, super convenient, like that it's locally owned, like that it contributes to the community. But there are three issues that we're talking about. We're talking about the fence, talking about the dust, we're talking about the noise. And so we have tried to keep them individually, individual pillars that we will try to solve. Due to the fact that the 26 trees have been, are being asked to be cut down, which has served as a somewhat of a filter for us for the, for the dust. And Gary explaining to us some of the fire codes that we didn't necessarily understand last night, like things growing up in the canopy, totally understand that makes sense. It's like the fence and the dust are now really more closely intertwined than they were before. So we're looking for a solve and there are lots of, I like your line of questioning with regard to, I have potocarpus in my backyard that grow up nice and high, close to a fence, provide a little screen, like there, there are options we could explore there. And in the spirit, like Suzie was mentioning, the spirit of collaboration, like we just met last night. We've been trying to do this for a long time. We heard some really good things. We heard there was maybe some compromise. We're willing to give and take. I'm willing to go across the street and plant some trees and water them and trim some stuff. Like, we want to take care of our neighborhood. Like, we want to work together, but it just seems like we've gotten stonewalled up until this point. The whole idea of the fire hazard and on a wood fence, to me feels like a red herring. Because we're planning, where it's using wood posts, it's got wood toppers. It's wood. It's going to burn unless we're using all metal fence and metal posts and other things. So I get it aesthetically. We'd like something that's all wood. The, the panel pieces break, Gary had mentioned, maybe there's a, we could break up the, the design with the, with the corrugated wood and some, and corrugated metals and wood. We're open to doing that, but you know, when we talked to the, the tree committee and we, we explained to them, like, the idea of just moving the fence line in 24 inches would mitigate a lot of problem. It would keep a lot of those trees. It would probably be cheaper for Fairfax number two, because I wouldn't have to pay, I'm going to guess a thousand dollars a tree to remove all those trees. I don't know, it could be more. But there, there are options and we'd like to explore them with them and to see what could possibly work. And I felt like, you know, our feet are kind of the fire tonight. We wanted to come, we would have liked nothing more than to show up in here and everyone would rubber stamp the plan because we're all in alignment, like, we're good. So that's our hope. Thanks for listening.
Hi, my name's Hillary Whitman. I live at 16 Spruce and we're one of the houses that's drastically affected by the dust that comes over from Fairfax lumber, not only from the cars driving through, but from the bulk bins where the forklifts go in disturb, rock, gravel, and huge plumes of dust come over onto our house, our cars, into our homes. I have a child, so it's hard for me to hear that it would be more important that the Fairfax lumber lose a little bit of space than the citizens of Fairfax get to live in their homes in a healthy environment with clean air. If you come and look at the lumberyard, that's not being utilized on the inside of the fence. Those are just pallets and different items that are sort of stacked there. I get that it would be an inconvenience to move that in, but it's probably not as inconvenient as having health problems. I'd really like to ask that you uphold the tree committee's recommendations. And if you can't uphold the tree committee's recommendations, that this approval be contingent on paving the yard or some other remediation for the dust that we breathe daily. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lily Horn. I live at 34 Spruce Road. Resident since 1999. Very familiar with all of our history with the lumberyard. Dust issues from day one, combination, great neighbor, super convenient, love having the business in town. We have an opportunity. We've been waiting. We need more conversation. We need to get this flushed out. We're in the very early days, even though so much time has gone by, we were startled, the trees were cut down. We were struck with visual blight, straight in views to the lumberyard. Really, really unpleasant, just in terms of property value, separate from the dusty shoes, just extremely unattractive and exposed. So we just need to have a little bit more time, get this process under further discussion, tree committee recommendations. Just make this process be a little bit more flushed out, a little bit more discussion happening. Again, health issues, absolutely asthma, coughing, dust, screens on windows coated after cleaning the day before. And I'm not even where Hillary and Suzie are. I'm a little bit further up. So thank you all for your time and consideration. And I want to thank Gary and I want to thank our neighbors because I was gone for the past year and they've been meeting pretty much every two weeks and we have put in so many citizen hours surrounding this issue. And I just want to thank you guys and acknowledge because it's really been a big project. So and here we all are and we do need a little more time on this. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public in the room?
Hi, my name is Dave Smadec. I'm the executive director of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. And I know this is a very difficult situation. I am speaking in favor of Fairfax lumber and it was very, I was very gratified to hear all the positive comments from the neighbors. And I know this is a very difficult issue that you've been struggling with. And we hope, as far, as far as the business community goes, Fairfax lumber has been just one of the pillars of our community for over a hundred years and they've, and I'm sure you all know that. And I don't need to speak on all the, all the support they've given to the business community and this town and the service they provide. And I hope, you know, with, with all my heart, I hope that you can come to a swift and just answer to, to this situation and hope it's in favor of both parties. So thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. Frank Agar Metaway. I first came to Fairfax in 1944. Spent time here in the 50s. And then went to work running a bread route from San Anselmo to Point Reyes in 1960. Fairfax lumber has been a mainstay business for as long as I can remember. I knew Frank Boylou, who ran the lumberyard when I first became involved with the town in 1964. After Frank, it was Clyde Strauss. Then it became employee owned, as it is today. Last year, PG&E tree removal contractors came to Fairfax. They were paid based on the number of trees they cut down. Fairfax original tree protection ordinance was written by me. It required permits from the tree committee to remove a tree and a two for one replacement. PG&E contractors, you know, they came to our town, they cut down seven mature bay trees right across the street here. And that's town property, goes to town park. And it's an underground utility district, which we approved in the 1960s. So there weren't even utility lines over those trees and they cut them all down. I emailed the mayor. I said, what's going on? What, what's, what's happening? But there was no action by Fairfax. The contractors then went around town, cutting down trees. Folks are really upset. Not just Spruce. Up on scenic, out in the Cascades, all over the place. They go, what's going on here? How come Fairfax isn't protecting the trees? And those trees on Spruce provided a certain amount of visual and dust protection, I guess, from hitting the homes across the street. So PG&E really created a problem for, for the whole town. Including Spruce Road. Now Fairfax and a number of Spruce neighbor, neighbors have to deal with what PG&E created for Fairfax, their contractors created. During the Tubbs fire, I watched grasslands burning up north. And then they hit a long redwood fence. And two engines drove right by that redwood fence when it started on fire. Then I watched, they were out trying to evacuate the neighborhood. Then I watched about 150 feet of fencing, redwood fencing burn right up to the house. And within 10 minutes, the house was gone. Burned it down. So fire is a huge issue here in Fairfax for us. We all know that. It's not easy to make a lumberyard fire safe. An eight foot fence will provide some screening of the lumberyard activity. We, we need a lumberyard and a hardware store in Fairfax. At one time we had three hardware stores. We're down to one. We surely don't want to lose this one.
Frank, can you try and wrap it up?
I will, I will. Keeping as many trees as possible and installing maybe an eight foot combination fence, some brown corrugated with perhaps some wood panels. More shrub planting and planting some more trees for visual and sound barrier. After hearing the neighbors tonight, I'm not sure if the fence is the issue or the dust is the issue. It's going to be a tough deal with both of them. Thank you.
Any other comments from, that haven't spoken already from the public? And can somebody come up and just push the button? Thanks. Is there anyone out on Zoom? Yes, Chair, we do have one person on Zoom who's raised their hand. And Kendra, you are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Scott. I live at 10 Spruce Road. And I am speaking tonight, not just for myself and my partner, who, but also to, for all of us on Spruce Road and our community. For the past year, Spruce Road Neighbor Coalition has desperately been trying to have Ace Fairfax Lumber, the town council, the tree committee, and now the planning commission for help in implementing reasonable measures that Ace Fairfax Lumber can take to make this beautiful street livable again. As it is now, Spruce Road suffers from a daily onslaught of dust. Actually, it's toxic fugitive silica dust that is known to cause health issues. That comes from these uncovered bins, from trucks kicking up dust from the dirt surfaced yard with no tree barrier. There's no protection, protection from the dust that is, is coming in. And while tonight's meeting is about the approval of a fence, it really is interwoven with, with the tree barrier. We have no protection after PG&E, as Frank mentioned, PG&E cutting down many of our trees. We, we don't have protection. A fences alone is not going to do anything for that dust. Really, we need those trees. As, as some sort of filter, I, with all due respect to Gary, I, I have a hard time believing that we can't find some sort of shrub that will grow 15 to 20 feet that will, will help us in, in creating a barrier, barrier. I, 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 I beg you the, to either not approve this as it is proposed to you or to at least continue it so that we can, we can come up with a better solution. Really, at this point, a corrugated fence, what it's made of is not, does not matter as much as the health of, of the community. The fact that Fairfax lumber can't move, would rather cut down a tree than move some of its lumber that, that is dropping some things on their lumber, lumber. If that's a, a, if that's the reasoning for cutting down a tree, it doesn't seem reasonable to me. Move the lumber if, if a tree is dropping something on, on your lumber. Moving the fence line inward seems like another very reasonable solution. There's a lot of real estate on that property and which is not being utilized now. I thank you for your time. I thank you for considering this. This is the health of our community that we're asking about. We, we're, we're not just asking because we want to see a fence be put up. That seems less important to us than, than our health. So I thank you for, for your time, everybody.
There are no more hands online. Thanks. So with that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll start. Uh, yeah, this is a complicated thing, much more than it appears to be. There are three different things, I think is mentioned before. And they are intermingled, but nevertheless, I think if you would wait to solve them all, that's going to take a long time. There, there's a conflict, right? The big trees would probably do something against, against dust that flies high. But there are power lines overhead, so you can't have big trees. And I'm even foregoing what the fire department would think about that. In the meantime, a fence cannot solve the dust problem, but it will help a little bit. So I'm, I'm struggling still with it myself. I want to hear what other commissioners say. So I think if you do take one step at a time, you are gradually improving what is happening. The only question that I have, and I think there was some questioning early on, does it make any difference if you move the fence one way or the other? To the degree that I see what's going on, that would not make such a big difference because a number of those trees are being removed because they're either more shoplike or they are undesired species. Or some of them are not in a good condition. So I'm, I'm, to me, the big question is whether it makes more sense, because I, I don't think there is a real opposition against the fence itself. It is a sort of a compromise. It is, because it is mostly metal, it is indeed better for fire protection. It will help solve a little bit of the dust, probably more the noise. So boom, so you know, it seems to be the, the first right step. It just, it's not the end, but I'm not sure that at this point, this commission would need to uphold this to solve the next problem. I think the next problem is the real big problem and it must be solved. But I don't think it should preclude this going forward. That's sort of where my, my, my brain is going. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, just, you know, feeling largely the same way. I know this came up originally when the community on Spruce Road first went to the town council before coming to the planning commission last fall about the dust. I under, totally agree. The dust is the big major concern here. And, and my perspective being that anything we do should be, you know, towards the aim of, of addressing that problem. You know, I thought, sort of like you, that while You know, I thought, you know, sort of like you, that while. Defense is being brought up because it's going to do something to address their concerns. You know, we heard in the public comment that it's not going to do everything, the, the fence isn't really going to make that big a difference with the dust. But the issue is the trees cut down by PG&E made a big negative difference for them and. You know, we are hearing specific requests to delay so they can talk through this further. Which. At the end of the day, we are, any of the actions we're taking are to address their concerns. So I don't know how. Helpful it is to take an action now that. Doesn't actually solve their, you know, we're still gonna hear. Requests to change uh, whatever's decided down the road and then. While I, I would like to hear further and, and maybe. There's more information on, on how much. Um, of an issue it is going forward with just the fence while. The other uh, issues continue to be addressed, as you noted. I think the concern with doing the fence now first is that. Even if most of the trees being removed to put in the new fence are undesirable, there still is going to be some tree removal. And if that makes a bigger negative difference. On the dust and noise situation now, um, while they can still talk about. How much of a difference it does make to move the fence somewhere uh, further in line and how much uh. That, that really is an option. So. Because the. Because the fence would require the removal, at least of the trees, it would require pruning. Under the supervision of the arborist, I think. You know, that's, that seems like hard to, hard to walk back and, and probably merits uh, more caution before. Moving forward.
Okay, um. So this is a hard one, right? We have a business, it's longstanding center of our community, right? And, but almost unanimous. Uh, from what I can tell, uh, opposition from their direct neighbor. Uh, in the community, right? It's, that's a hard. Situation for our town. Um, I wanted just to point out that there's, there's three actions really in front of us tonight. We are the planning commission. I don't think I've ever spoken about dust, frankly, in a planning commission meeting. So that also is difficult for me to. Wrap my head around because um, I would like to think that the planning commission does have a public health responsibility for our community. Right? Um, though it's not uh, bricks and mortar. Um, and height and bulk. Um, it is something that we should be cognizant of in how uh, we're affecting our, our town. Uh, but back to our action. Uh, tonight, we've been asked to uh. Evaluate a fence height variance. A tree removal permit and a design review permit. Um, they're, they're kind of intermingled a bit, which also is not unfortunately clear and clean uh. Sort of issues. Um, but just. To um. Sort of. Muddy the waters a little bit. I don't, I haven't heard a thing said negative about the height of the fence tonight. Um, unless we're gonna make it sixty feet tall to try to avoid the, the, the dust, right? Which I don't think anybody's gonna consider. The tree removal permit, we've definitely heard and um. I am, am absolutely not an advocate of. Uh, disregarding our uh, tree committee uh, recommendation. Uh, I, I think that we. Have to honor their. Uh, recommendation there, you know, um. They are also looking out for the, the betterment of our town. Uh, so that's where I'm standing on that one. And the designer view permit, I think. It does have an aesthetic. Impact um, in how the, the fence is placed directly. Causing certain trees to be removed, as you pointed out originally, Commissioner Jensen. There, so there's, there's some subtleties just to the design of the placement of the fence, which I think we should be considering tonight as part of the design review. It's not just the color of it, the materiality of it, but uh, the location of it very subtly affects the neighborhood greatly. So I just wanted to just remind us what the actions are tonight and uh, sort of start to frame my point of view about those actions.
Commissioner Newton, you wanna go before I do?
Sure, um. Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate everybody else's comments and. For my. Thoughts, just to respond, uh. You know, I do think it's unfortunate that the um. Applicants. Expert was not able, the landscaper was not able to meet with the tree committee. And they were not able to have the benefit of the explanation that we received this evening. You know, about some of the issues with respect to. The canopies and, and you know. And. You know, I am also uh. Reluctant to ignore the um, tree committees recommendations. Except for that. Except for the fact that they didn't have the benefit. And I don't know how we. Go about resolving that, right? Like uh, in the future. You know, if the applicant doesn't show up with their landscaper to the tree committee meeting, then the tree committee is, is basing its decision making on the input from. Uh, the, the neighbors uh, as opposed to uh. You know, a professional. And so that's a concern to me. I just, I don't know how to resolve it, except my inclination is to defer to the professional. On the advice that they provided um. And you know, I totally agree with uh. Mr. Edgar about, you know, the, the problems that PG&E has brought to us by uh, cutting down trees in the first place. I think with respect to the fence height. You know, I, I like the design with the metal and the wood. I like the antique. Metal. I don't. Want to uh, require some sort of uh, finish that uh. Does something other than allows the metal to age. I wouldn't be opposed to requiring the repair of the structure of the fence over time. Uh, but um. You know, if we are to move forward with approving this, I would uh. Limit that, that type of requirement to the structural maintenance as opposed to the visual maintenance, because frankly, I like the aging of the metal. That's my personal thing. So obviously, give that the weight it deserves. And so I think I'm leaning towards uh. Approving with the um. The resolution that staff has recommended. Over.
Okay, my thoughts on this as far as um. The tree committees recommendations to us, their recommendations were to move the fence and not take out any trees. Or replace the trees one for one. Um, and we've heard input from an arborist. Report that says that replacing. Trees that are being taken out would impact. The ones that are there. Um, and I have to. Respect that opinion. Um, and be concerned about anything else that would go in between those. There's also the issue of um. Vegetation going up. Into canopies from a fire standpoint. Um, and as far as the fence, the, I think the metal fence. Supports, a- as some have mentioned, um, the concerns over fire and fire going along. A totally wooden fence. They are planting. Two trees, one on each end. Of the fence line. Um, the fence is not a straight line, but they've tried to. Make the design of it so it's not monotonous. Um, and as one of the commissioners said, you know, the fence isn't going to solve. Other issues that um, the community has. Um, it may help with noise. It may help some with dust. Um, considering what is there now. Um, so I would be inclined to um, approve. The application tonight. That doesn't mean that going forward. That um, there can't be continued discussions. About improvements. But I think to. A, to continue this, I think we would want some input from. The applicant on that. And I think um. You know. This has been continued for a bit of time. We've gotten a landscape architect coming in. We've got new plans that are more formalized with an arborist report. So we've made. Um, some headway on this. So I too would be um, inclined to. Approve this as the application is submitted.
Okay, and staff just wants to remind you that you, per the Permit Streamlining Act, you have, you have to take. Action tonight unless you mutually agree with the applicant to a continuance of no more than ninety days. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody heard the applicant say that they believe they have found places on the site. Where they could accommodate perhaps five trees. I mean, I, I believe that's what I heard Gary Roth say. So you might want to think about that if it's, if the neighbors are really concerned about trees. You know, if they're on the lumberyard side, they may be able to keep them away from. Becoming ladder fuel in between the uh, London Plains. So that's all.
So let me get a straw poll here of the commission. Um, to see if the commission can. Move to approve this application as it's submitted tonight. If there's enough um, support for that. Um, that would be my first question. For the commission.
Can I ask one uh, question of staff before?
Sure.
Yeah, um, so you mentioned with the uh, streamlining process that we can only um. Not take action if the applicant agrees to continue for not more than ninety days. And I know we heard from Gary, but. On the staff report, the applicant being Fairfax Lumber, I just want to confirm who's actually able to, on their behalf, agree to.
I believe it would be Augie.
Okay.
Cause Augie's here, right? Yes.
So how do you feel about approving or wanting to discuss the possibility of continuing it? And then if we were to continue it, identify specific. Process or specific things we would want to. Out of that continuance.
Um, yeah, well, I. Agree with, with what the other commissioners have said in terms of what the actions actually are being. Fence height variance, the, the height of the fence doesn't seem to be a problem. That's not driving the concerns. Um, and, and I'm in agreement on the des- design review and. And, and prefer to defer to the, to the arborist discussion and the. Tree committee um, recommendation. But my, you know, I thought after we continued this in, in October that we weren't going to hear. Until there was at least a, a tentative sort of uh. Alignment between Spruce and Fairfax Lumber on what they want to do because. It's my understanding Fairfax Lumber wouldn't have on their own. Brought this application up. If not for part of the process and, and working to address the concerns of Spruce Road. And if we do approve these. Recommendations tonight, my concern is, does that limit the amount of input that the people on Spruce Road get? Do they have fewer opportunities to come and speak before the town? Um, and to weigh in on the process so that whatever does move forward, they can really be. Aligned on it. So, you know, that's. My biggest concern with just approving now as opposed to doing a. Time limited uh, continuance, but. I also understand that we'd need. Buy-in from both the applicant and frankly from um, the, the folks on Spruce Road that we're hearing from as to. What they actually would like to see happen in that ninety days. So it's not just a delay with, with no gain.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes, I think so. There, there are two things we can do. We can. Let me go, let me go back, I think. So the issue is not the fence, we know that. The issue is where, where could trees be maintained or placed? And does that, or does that involve moving the fence? Um, I, I would think unlikely moving because you're, if you move it, you're still under the power lines. It's always a problem. Um, but both needs to be solved. So then there's two things we can do. We can approve the fence. And the plan as it stands now, but somehow weave in that the recommendations from the tree commission still have to be met. Meaning there has to be found a plan. Probably on the Fairfax Lumber side of the fence to add more trees. Or we can ask for a. For sustain, for a uh, another ninety days to see if that can be resolved. The later. Allows to be more intelligent about whether or not it makes sense to move the fence partially or not. So I am leaning. To ask for a continuance because we're very close to the end, I think. The, we understand what the problem is and there are limited possibilities. But in order to get that last bit out of it, there's just one more effort. And. If we allow the fence now, then it's done and it's set and you. Can no longer play with it. So that I'm leaning towards that. But of course, that can only be done if the applicant agrees to that. So. That, that's where my.
And another option is um. Just to put that on the table as well, approving. The application if we were to choose to do that, and then it could be appealed to the. Council. I mean, that is another aspect of this, um, if we went that way. So I just wanted to mention. Um, Commissioner. Sorry, I was off. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, the other option. You know, yeah, let's ask the applicant if they're willing to continue this. Um, I think that you're right, that that is probably the best. Way to move forward, to work something out that makes sense. I think. In my mind, the fallback is to. Condition approval on uh. You know, requiring. At least five replacement trees. So I don't necessarily think it's uh, take the. Tree committee's recommendation as is, or there's no other option, right? I think that there is room. Given what we heard about the seventeen and the stumps and the. Things that have constantly been uh. Cut down over the years and are, you know. Continuing to come up is uh, it sounded reasonable to me. So I just think that there's that other option of sort of uh, pushing um, for as many trees as the landscaping professional thinks. Is possible. Or appropriate. Or doable. Over.
Commission. Well, I just wanted to throw out that if you do, if you do decide to take action subject to the planting of additional, the five additional trees. I would ask that you add in that, that the location and species of the tree be subject to review and approval by the town's arborist. As a condition, if you go that way.
Brett.
Okay. With regard to the. Design review of the fence, I'm concerned that the fence is going to appear as a wall in the community. Which is not, I think, a good thing. So if I was asked to. Approve. The project tonight on the images that I've seen without any softening on the exterior for the design. I might say no. I would prefer, I think, in the interest of the community to continue. And do a little bit more work here, I, I just want to point out that the recommendation by the. Tree. Committee was twofold. Either move the fence so we don't have to take down as many trees and not move the fence drastically, right? Or replace one to one, and I think that the precedent of that recommendation. I hate to say this, but is you can plant trees anywhere on your site. That's the precedent that we have in town, it doesn't have to be on the, on the fence line, but they have to be in kind, they've said, you know, fifteen gallons, etc., etc. So I think that I would prefer tonight to honor your straw poll to, to continue. And let the applicant try to honor those recommendations.
Okay, so it sounds like I would be the only one tonight that would be willing to approve this as it is. And hoping that. Right? I'm hearing four. Recommendations to continue versus.
I thought I heard me, Commissioner Newton say she was willing to. By cracking up.
I mean, my position was, let's ask the applicant, because if the applicant is willing. To postpone, I actually think that's the best, you know, is to continue, I think that's the best. Way to proceed to see, as other commissioners have mentioned, if there is a way. To get the neighbors and Fairfax Lumber to agree on an approach. With respect to the trees specifically. But that, you know, if the applicant is unwilling to. Continue it, you know, and we have to make a decision. You know, I have some room. To sort of, in my mind, include some additional conditions beyond what's in the staff report.
Okay, so we can have the applicant come up with that, the Augie representing.
The way I see it is, yes, there are three issues that need to be discussed. And we can either prolong the pain by going with the continuance or at least. Achieve one piece, which would be the fence, so that we can get that piece going. Now, in terms of the trees, I'd plant trees all over the darn place. If it wasn't for the constraints that we have to create a green barrier to grow high to help block dust. But what are we gonna do? That's why we've relied on an arborist, that's why we're also relying on a landscape architect. You guys tell me what to do.
So it sounds like you do not want to continue this.
I prefer to at least solve one of three problems, that's my opinion.
All right. Thanks, Augie. Oh, never mind. So the applicant is not in favor of continuing this. So with that, our. Options are to approve it. If there's any conditions we want to make to it that we could approve. Or deny the application. Either of those, in either of those cases, there's going to be the standard appeal process. So from my perspective, I think looking at. The application, looking at the arborist report, looking at the landscape plans. I would be in favor of approving it. As it is, I don't agree with the tree committee's recommendations to do a one for one replacement. Nor necessarily to move the fence back. To maintain the trees. And it would take care of one issue with at least addressing. The fence. And it can go from there, I know there's going to be other discussions on the other issues. Such as the noise and the dust, I think in some cases, the noise with a solid fence. Might be helpful, it might keep some of the dust out, but it certainly won't. Solve all the concerns and that'll have to go beyond, you know, what is before us, so. You know, my thought on this would be to go ahead and approve the application as it is. And then let the process go forward because the applicant would not be willing to, to do a continuance at this point. So that's my thoughts.
Well, I, I would be prepared to make a motion, I actually have a couple of. Changes to the resolution that we have with the staff report that were. You know, a couple of typos, but also I have some questions. For staff. In the. Finding section of the proposed resolution. In the tree removal permit.
Yes, I, I didn't, yeah, Mimi, I didn't go through my changes to the resolution, but I have some, so maybe I should go through them first. And I did get your, your comments. So what, do you want me to do that now before someone makes a motion? Okay, so. We had on page two, the first paragraph, like the third line from the end was supposed to me, say. Fence panels framed in wood with two sections at the southwest and northeast end topped with two feet of horizontal wood and plats. And then, let's see, under the tree removal permit, there was no town code sections. And so it should say town code sections eight point three, six point zero, six, zero, B, one and four. And then we wanted to add the, the. Finding that the tree removals are necessary to protect the safety of the neighborhood and to allow the owner to reasonably build the fence. The requested fence without giving up. Any, or limiting the, the operations of the lumberyard area. And then on, on page two, under, under the first, the, the first whereas on that page. Number one, the date of the attachment submitted by the applicant is supposed to be October thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Not, not October seventeenth of twenty twenty-two. Yes.
October thirtieth of twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
No, we haven't had October thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Sorry, yeah, hang on, whatever it said on the front of the plans.
I think it's, we wanted to add five thirty, twenty-three to that.
May thirtieth, I'm sorry, May thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Okay.
Not May eleventh of twenty twenty-three?
It was, it's, my set is stamped received by the town on May thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Does somebody have something that's stamped a different date? Okay. Okay, May third, okay, and then on page three, under number five, it should say the International Society of Arborists. Parenthesis ISA professionals shall provide, and you're gonna remove the twenty twenty-three that got stuck in there somehow. And then under seven, condition seven, the last sentence should read. I have to find it again, if the parties cannot reach agreement, the town may select its own legal counsel. And the applicant agrees to pay directly or timely, or timely reimburse on a monthly basis, the town for all such court costs, attorney fees. And time referenced herein, provided however that the applicant's duty in this regard shall be subject to the town's promptly notifying the applicant. Of any said claim, actions or proceedings. Period. And those were the ones that I had. Well, Cindy helped, but other commissioners pointed out some of those, so do you have other ones?
That resolves my concerns, although. I just want page five from the previous minutes to be included in the packet somehow for posterity.
Got it, okay.
And I would also. Add the. Language about. A, a conditions, let me see where this would go, about maintaining. The structural integrity of the fence. Could you read that recommended language again that you would?
Yeah, let me see if I can change it to, you wanted it to be more clear that it's, that, that you're required. You want the structural integrity maintained, not necessarily the finishes of the materials, right?
Right.
That, okay, where was that?
And maybe that.
So I think, I think it's on page, it's on the bottom of page four, and you can probably just say the fence, the structural integrity of the fence shall be made in good. Shall, shall be maintained in good repair by Fairfax Lumber. Properly to, failure to properly maintain the structural integrity of the fence will rev, will result in code enforcement proceedings. Would that work?
Yeah, and then. Also, I would like to add the language about the.
Mimi. Just a sec, can you, I'm sorry, can you go back and do that piece again, the integrity?
Yeah, I guess you did, we didn't decide where it would go, Mimi, do you want me to read what, what? What the language would be again, or did you want Mimi to just indicate where she wanted it to go in the resolution?
Probably where. Sorry, what we have under the tree removal permit finding on page two is, talks about the fence. Item two, so it says the fence should be a rust brown color and shall be maintained in good repair. By the lumberyard, failure to properly maintain the fence will result in code enforcement proceedings being taken. Against the lumberyard to restore the fence to its original condition, so I was. Confused about that in relation to.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Newton's input.
Do you want to just take that number two and just add maintained in, in a good structural condition? I mean, they're kind of the same thing.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I mean, my suggestion for the condition was, was because people were indicate, the public indicated that they were worried. That the metal itself would degrade and end up not looking good, but if, if it's, that's not a concern, then.
Okay, maybe we don't need to add that then, and number two takes care of it. And then on the replacement, you're talking about paragraph four, under the tree removal permit findings. Is that right, Cindy? It says no replacement trees are required to ensure the continued health of the trees to be retained. And maybe there's a. Clause added to that that indicates except. The applicant shall. Plant and maintain. Five replacement trees.
So what you're adding in there then is getting, asking the applicant. To add five trees. In a, in addition to what they've already added in there. I mean, what, what the plan already says, is that what you're asking?
Well, what they had told us today was that they could, they identified maybe five areas where they might be able to include additional trees. So I was gonna try and take them up on that, I did not think that was included in the current plan.
It's not, but they did indicate that, the arch, landscape architect indicated that they had walked the site, you can double check with him. And identified potentially five locations where some trees could go in.
So then, if that's the case with the landscape architect, he's saying potentially. So I don't know that I want to tie the reso down to. Mandating that five are, five additional trees.
Well.
Are added, but maybe having them look at the potential. No?
No, I mean, if, if, if they get to choose where and what types of trees. I don't think five is too many to require, especially if I'm not saying where they have to be. On the property, right, which is the point that. You know, was made earlier. So I would actually, I mean, you know, this is my, my motion. And, you know, if you don't like it, you could reckon, you know, vote against it and, and we can have a different motion. But I would say add the five trees, it's not the one to one replacement that the tree committee. Was recommending. But it's based on, you know. A little window that we heard from the landscaper today, so. I would move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty. Of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number twenty dash twenty-two for fence height variance, tree removal permit. And design review permit to allow erection of an eight foot tall fence along the rear property line. With the changes that Linda went over with us just now. As well as the clause that I recommended about including an additional five replacement trees.
And just for clarity, you're saying those five trees could be replaced anyplace on the property, not necessarily along the fence line?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any comments, questions, or a second? I'll make a second. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Kelly?
Nay.
Jensen?
Nay.
Pepper?
Nay.
Newton?
Aye.
And Chair Swift?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion does not pass.
So the motion does not pass. For this application, so there is a ten day.
No, the motion didn't pass, so you should entertain, are there, does anyone else want to make a different motion?
Sorry. Apologize, does anyone else want to make a new motion?
I don't have a motion right now, I just want to raise the point with the continuance when the applicant spoke. I just, based off public comment, I don't think moving forward just the fence gets one of the three issues out of the way. And so that you can focus on. And so that you can focus on the remaining issues, I think. From what we heard from the folks on Spruce Road, that just moving forward with the fence as is doesn't address any of their concerns and potentially, um, you know, just has a new one replacing the, the concern you're trying to address, which is.
Okay, um, understanding that the applicant, applicant did not want to go forward with a continuance, so we've disapproved this resolution. Does anyone have a new, go ahead.
Should we take a break so I can contact the town attorney to see if there's just an option of no action by the commission? I'm not sure.
No, because I think, I mean, no action by the commission.
Yeah.
I mean, you still have to go somewhere with this, so.
Right.
You know, it's either there wasn't an approval of the reso. So it's either somebody else come up with perhaps a different resolution.
Or I guess no act- approval of the reso is a denial, isn't it?
It is a done denial unless, right, right. All right. So I'll go back to my first statement. We've denied the application, so there is a ten-day appeal process to the town council. And, um.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Yeah, uh, Chair Swift, I do think if you, you, you should solicit any other, uh, commissioners that might have an alternative resolution other than, before we just say that the, the flat denial of the proposal that I put forward.
Well, I thought I had just done that, but let me go ahead and.
And I heard Commissioner Pepper, I assume that the other commissioners are also like, we're not going to make any motions. Is that right, guys?
Yeah, I do not have a motion. I could make some comments, but, um, I do not have an alternate motion that I think can pass. No.
Would, would the commission consider, would any, would it, would it be helpful to take action on the application, um, the way Commissioner Newton just did it, but condition the five, the location of the five trees to being approved by the Fairfax Tree Committee? No? Okay.
I think that, um, the only way I could approve it is with a fairly nebulous condition, and that's why I can't do it. Um, I, I think that the fence needs a redesign. And I can't condition it enough to say, to, to design it for them.
Fair enough, Commissioner.
Let me do a ten thousand feet observation. I think we have two uses next to each other that are not compatible. Uh, you would not plan a city like that, but it's historically grown that way. Um, and I think there's good intent from both sides to get to a good resolution. Um, the problem is mostly not caused by either of them. It's PG&E that took some unilateral action that aggravated the situation. Right now, there is not a solution that both parties find fully, um, satisfying. And therefore, we as a commission should take that very serious. I think this isn't serious issues because it would not be in the best interest of either one of them if they can't come to a full agreeable solution. And so I think we're really close. I mean, that's, that's why we're entertaining this as well. We're really close. But we're not entirely there because it's so complicated and, um, it's best to reevaluate it with all the parts still being able to move. If we now approve it with, as, uh, Commissioner Kelly said, a nebulous condition, that precludes you to get, make that la- last final step to find a solution that will make everybody happy. And I think that's why we have the votes the way they are.
Sure.
Just, I just wanted to make one more statement that, um, we're in a very fortunate place, actually. We, we have a special subcommittee of the, uh, town council. From what I understand, we have very active and concerned town people and fantastic businesses that wanted to all do the right thing. So I, I think we're, this is a hard two hours that we just spent, um, but I think hopefully it's going to turn out for the best.
So do you want to reiterate, Linda, the appeal?
Well.
Commissioner Newton?
I just think that what we're doing is tying the applicant's hands, basically. Um, you know, you, you say that we're so close and we could just get, you know, over this hump, but by denying the application, we're going to pretty much force the applicant to go back to square one. And, uh, I'm concerned about that, uh, approach. And, uh, so I guess I'd ask the applicant to come up again, uh, if Augie's still there. And tell us if, uh, you would be willing to give us a thirty-day extension, uh, continuance or a sixty-day continuance, if you're not willing to give us a ninety-day continuance. Otherwise, I just, I'm just concerned that this is going to put us back too far.
Let me go back to Linda and can you explain again the continuance process? Because it's not to, it's not to exceed ninety days.
Allows the commission and the applicant to agree together to a continuance not to exceed ninety days. So you can do it any, anywhere in that ninety days. It just can't be longer than ninety days.
So.
Is that working? Um, if, if it's being essentially denied and continued, are there, will there be specific points that need to be addressed when we come back? Specific.
You mean, if he agree, if, if, if the lumberyard agrees to the continuance?
Well, I don't really understand this process where we're going right now.
So right now, it's, right now, because, because the motion to approve it failed, the application, right, is, is dead. There's a ten-day appeal period, or the applicant can consi- can come up again and address the commission to see if he's willing, you know, now that he's heard everything that the commission has said, to agree to a continuance, to try to work it out. And the commission will give direction, correct? You'll give them direction on what you want them to try to work out with the neighbors? Give it one more shot, because stopping at this point, when everyone's come this far, is going to be.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just add a little, the process is that that appeal, uh, if we disapprove the application, that appeal is by the applicant to the town council. At which point the applicant takes, you know, the application to end all this testimony and everything from this meeting to the town council, and the town council decides if they agree with the planning commission or if they would take a different approach than the planning commission. There's been a couple of appeals, uh, you know, that, that, have happened over the course of the last year or so. So, uh, you know, the town council doesn't always agree with the planning commission. Sometimes they do. So you kind of take your chances on an appeal, um, or give it another shot. Give us some kind of continuance and then bring it back here. And theoretically, the, the planning commission would give you some guidance as to what we would like to see happen. And you may or may not, you know, come back having accomplished that or whatever, but we just, you know, come back here another day, uh, before the planning commission makes a final decision as to whether to approve or deny. And, you know, if we approve, neighbors have a right to appeal to the town council. If we deny, the applicant would have a, an appeal right. Does that help?
Sorry, not really. Um, no. I'm trying to understand, are you suggesting that in order to come back to the planning commission now, we have to appeal? Or can we just reapply, reapply based upon discussions with the neighbor and design revisions based upon discussions with neighbors?
So we would, you would approve or be willing to a continuance. We would identify specific areas that the commission would want to look at. Um, and we could even set the amount of time.
Yeah, they could just set.
So why, you can't go beyond ninety days. To, to, it can't be continued beyond ninety days, so we could identify, you know, a specific time that we would want it.
Date certain, you know, so they could continue it to the next meeting, they continue it to two meetings from now, to try to.
So just to clarify, should the, uh, applicant, should Augie say now, turn around and say, actually, I'm fine with a continuance, then we don't need to appeal and we can come back?
Yeah, you can come back to the commission.
But because you said, no, I want you to do, okay, that's trying to triangulate this a little bit. Okay.
But the commission was pointing out that, you know, you, Augie can't appeal to the council right now, and the council may not agree with the commission, you know, it's.
And may I add, I, I'm not clear as to why the, just since this seemed to become an important aspect to this discussion, the tree committee recommendations affecting your decisions, when the tree committee doesn't seem to understand basic fire code and basic tree planting issues. And I just, I don't, I'm mystified by that. I just wanted to lay that out, um, and it's a concern of mine. Uh, and I, and I apologize that I couldn't be at that meeting, um, but that seems like a problem. That if they're not, if they're not actually understanding basic fire issues in our community in twenty, two thousand and twenty-three. So, thank you.
So does the commission have specific ideas about what you, and before we get there, before what you would want to ask to be looked at? Okay.
Okay, so we just make sure that the applicant.
That's what I was going to do. So Augie, can you come back up, please? So my first, um, question for you, Linda, would be when we say a date certain, where do we identify how long this process takes or when they come back?
I'm going to recommend a continuance of thirty days and maybe put us on the next agenda, the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right, so does the commission have specific? Sorry.
Oh.
We need, we need everything a minimum of ten days before the meeting, and they meet the third Thursday of each month. Yeah.
Are you around? I'm sorry? All right, that being said, then not a September meeting, but the following after that.
So you mean for, to the September meeting, right? Yeah, yes, that, that's fine, too.
So that would be the, uh, the September meeting, and now does the commission have thoughts of what the applicant needs to look at, and if you could identify those?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can. Well, it's, it's regarding planting, so the number of trees that can be preserved wants to be maximized, um, and of course, not trees that for some reason would be sick or have to remove for another reason. But what that means can, that means a couple of things. The first one is that, um, where trees have to be removed because they are in the footprint of the fence, I would recommend that the fence goes around the trees, and that is a, uh, that could be, the whole fence could move, parts of the fence could move. Probably best parts of the fence, because then it becomes less of a solid wall, which is, I think, considering the total length of that thing and the scale of it within the city, uh, that is going to be important. Um, that might only save a few of them, um, so. Sure, well, I, I think where, where it is not useful to keep them, and I mean, that is not entirely clear, because there's, there's, you know, there are different opinions here, and that's not com- I understand that you've walked the site, and if you do that, you get a much better, uh, impression as a professional. Um, to the degree that it's not possible, new trees, new locations need to be identified, and they don't have to be specifically on the public side. They can also be on the property itself. The purpose of those trees is to create a higher canopy to mitigate the dust. The dust is the big thing here. And we've all heard that. Um, second, so that is, it's about the trees. Either you find additional ones that you can preserve or you add more new ones so that you get a more continuous higher canopy that helps with the dust. And of course, it also helps with the vision of what it used to like when it was a continuous canopy. The second one is that the areas that are identified in green as those very narrow strips that are allowed to be planted, I think there wants to be a plan on what that is. And those, that planting will not help to the dust. It won't go above the fence, because then you get your fire ladder. But it will change the appearance of that fence itself. Instead of one solid, continuous structure, it will have some granary around it. Um, those are the two main ones, and I think both of them, or particularly the first one, references back to the recommendation of the tree committee. Um, I understand that there might be issues with what that recommendation is, but simply making a statement and skipping it is not the answer. I think it needs some more details planned, plan of, um, how the spirit of it can be met. Now let me, let me think further if there's more that's coming up.
So just to clarify that, as far as looking at, um, where additional trees could be planted, you want them to assess if there are additional trees that could be planted, whether it's on one side of the fence or the other, if that's feasible, and then come back.
Right, where, where, where.
It may or may not be feasible, but to look at that possibility.
Well, you can only plant trees where it's possible and allowed. Of course, you cannot plant them where it doesn't work and where PG&E is going to cut them down. But it's a very large property. There are places to plant trees. So the idea that you can't plead, plant any trees there is, I, maybe it's true, but then we'll find out. It has to be proven. Um, the fence currently is more or less under where those power lines are. So moving it would only be marginal to avoid anything that's existing that is preservable. Um, um, so, you know, that, which one that is, I don't know. But I, when I read the report that's on here, it appears to be that there are a number of them. Um, so those are the two aspects of it, but we have to see it. And the second part is that we have to see a planting plan for those small green areas that we can plant in. And there goes the same thing. The location of the fence determines how large those areas are. If you take two panels of the fence and you pull them two feet inboard, you have suddenly a two-feet planting area that you can use. Um, because the fence can be there, there can be plants too. Now, they cannot be trees, that's understood, and they probably don't want to be above the fence. And there's a limitation in what species will grow there. There's a little ton of limitations that's completely understood. But the current plan doesn't have any of that. And that's the part that's missing.
Okay.
And that's the last piece, and it's the best you can do. And there's an absolute limit to what is possible. But I think the, uh, the, the owners and occupants on Spruce Street, um, on Spruce Street, um, deserve that. They, um, they have a serious impact by the scale of this opposed to the scale of their buildings. That, that's the real issue. It's two conflicting uses. And so the, the changes that we're looking for are not that big, but it wants to really push it to that limit, and, um, that needs to be identified. And we can't do that in a addition to the resolution. That, that's really the, the thing. Um, I, I mean, hopefully, the landscape architect can do that in the thirty-day period. I'd be happy to look at it next month.
Or September.
Yeah, I think he's.
September. So you're asking for an assessment of those green areas to see what is feasible, um.
Right, there, there are, so there's a whole. Right, there are still, there's a whole zone of green elements. What is the planting that goes in there? How do you modify the fence if necessary to accommodate or do something playful? That are, those are not trees. We understand that, but it is greenery. And the second is, which of those trees? That are in the fence line currently could be preserved if you move the fence backwards. And then the third one is, what are the locations where new trees could be planted? Further into the property, because they can't grow into the power lines or the existing tree canopies. Further into the property so that you get a uh better, taller canopy that. Helps with dust clouds. Because that's what they do to a degree. I mean, it's all limited what can be done. But I think every little bit is extremely important in this situation. It's a bit a long winded story, but I'm making it up while I'm sitting here, so I can, I can rephrase it in three bullet points.
Uh, I'm very happy uh that the decision is being made to continue the uh application. I think that I would. Be very favorable of the project uh with a couple uh adjustments. Uh, the the height variance, I think the height is actually good for everybody. The the trouble is, we're creating, I'm maybe the only sound wall I know of in Fairfax, uh, which. Has horrible implications in a lot of ways. Uh, hopefully, it does cut down on some dust and a bunch of the noise for the the resident, which is great. Uh, I am worried about the wall ac- aspect of the sound wall. Um, so that. Dubtails to me with the design review, because it is a design issue for the town. Um, it it'd be very easy for me to approve a project that you chose to offset your fence from the property line a couple feet, so you could. Uh, do a two foot strip of planting just to green it up. Uh, it'd help with the sound uh. Uh, reflection back to the houses, right, which that wall's gonna do, that fence is gonna do. Um, it would help soften it, so it doesn't feel as hard and uh foreboding to the neighborhood as you're. Uh, riding your kids to school along the bike route there, right? Um, we don't, we don't want a sound wall in Fairfax, and hopefully, we can do anything we can to soften that edge. And I'd be very in favor of the project if it did those couple things. Um, as well as, uh, I want to address the tree removal. Um, I think the precedent. Of that one to one replacement uh for projects in town is you you get to replace. Those trees that you take down anywhere on your property with an acceptable tree. As you're saying, we don't want you to put the same bad trees in the same bad spot. Um, but we're we're a green town. We want to keep it green. We don't want to tear down trees. We don't want you to be another PG&E. Uh, effort of just sort of seeing, seeing, everybody seeing the project is just, you know, ripping down a bunch of trees. So uh, I would hope. That you would put those trees in a place that could help screen the neighbors. That would certainly, you know, get an immediate thumbs up, uh, at least from this chair. Um, but the fact is, you know, you put them out along the street, probably be nice, too. Uh, I know that the um. I think you would have an option there, but honoring that uh. Tree committee opinion, I think, would also uh go a long ways for me.
Okay, so that um. Is different than what Commissioner Jansen said. And what you're asking for is remove for the trees that are be being removed. To look at the possibility of doing a one to one replacement.
Yes.
Um. And they can look at that, and then it would come back. I'm not sure. I mean, that's, that's the issue with providing input to look at things for a continuance. I don't know that that would be something that everybody. On the commission. Would necessarily support. So but what you're saying is asking them to think of that and consider that and come back. All right.
I think if if all those things happen, the next time we see it, it would be a very positive project interview by me.
Okay. Commissioner Newton, do you have any? Nope. All right. So I think we're up.
Yep, um, I just. Don't have any more um project fence tree related conditions. Uh, what I'm hoping is that um the neighbors get more than one day to talk to the landscape planner. I think for me, I could have been prepared to approve this had. The neighbors had enough time to know whether or not this fence. As much as it does or does not do to address their overall concerns. Does it do enough to go forward? And I don't think they've had the opportunity to weigh in and decide. Is this going to help or not? And that's just. What I want to hear, because I don't think we would have gotten this application at all had they're not. Had it not been proposed to address the concern. So I just want to know before voting that they have a better sense of whether or not this is going to um. You know, be Fairfax lumber spending money on a fence that could be spent doing something else that may make a difference uh. Uh, for their neighbors and and make everybody happier.
So hopefully, you all are. Clear on what you need to look at, and then I think you're looking at a September. Was that a September meeting date? Is that because you were going to be out for a while? So were we looking at? Um. Right. Right. So if Linda, if you could maybe. No. So if you want to just give them a clear date on when they, when you need to have something back.
We do a letter of action. We identify what you all said. We tell them when we need to have everything in order to keep it on that September meeting. Yeah, we'll include.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you all.
Do you need a motion to for us to continue?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mimi.
I'll.
Go ahead, Mimi.
I'll move to continue uh. This item um. On resolution number twenty twenty two thirty. Uh, until the September planning commission meeting with instructions uh to the applicant. Uh, in accordance with the conversations that we've had this evening.
Well, second.
Okay, and then I'll call the roll. Kelly.
Hi.
Jansen.
Hi.
Pfeffer.
Hi.
Newton.
Hi.
Chair Swift.
Hi, motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you all. Does anyone need to take a break, or do you want to go on? We'll take a five minute break. All right, so we're gonna have item two, thirty Park Lane Staff Report, here.
Hey, so um I'll start off with a little background. Um. The property is um irregularly shaped. There's a flat portion that kind of. Comes to a triangular point along Park Lane, and then there's another portion that slopes. Down to Scenic Road at a rate of about thirty five percent. Um, the project applicant, who is also the property owner. Um, David McNutt grew up in the home. It's been in his family since his great grandmother. And he inherited it and was doing some work on it and uncovered a lot of um. Dry rot and construction that was not up to current building code. Um, he tore down the house with the intent of rebuilding it and was red tagged. By the building official. So right now, um. The foundation is the only thing from the original house that remains on the property. Um, Mr. McNutt would like to build a new home using the existing foundation. And he proposes to expand it by about ten feet to the back of the house. Um, this would be to accommodate a single car garage and a closet addition for um a primary bedroom. Um, there would be um an approximately two hundred and ninety square foot, five and a half foot tall storage loft. Above the proposed addition that would be accessed by a small pull down ladder from the garage. The majority of the house would be approximately seventeen feet tall, with the addition reaching approximately twenty two feet. The interior garage um space um shown on the submitted plans does not meet. The minimum required length of nineteen feet for a parking space. However, there is attachment C to the staff report um. That shows the applicant can provide a nineteen foot long parking space by relocating the interior garage wall. Uh, the resolution approving the project includes a condition that the plans submitted for building permits show a nineteen foot interior garage length. This in turn would um. Reduce um the floor area of the home from um. What was proposed at a thousand thirty one square feet to a thousand sixteen square feet. There are some other modifications to the plans um that include changing um the proposed office to a bedroom. So instead of an office and a bedroom, it would be two bedrooms with no office. Um. And then staff requested that the applicant. Remove the window above the garage. There was like a long, narrow window. Um, and um add what's called a belt course. It's an architectural feature that's like a band that would go around the building to kind of help differentiate. Um, and maybe help reduce the appearance of the building's height and um scale down the mass and bulk of the residence. Attachment D shows the proposed exterior changes, which the applicant is willing to incorporate into the project. All these changes to the plans. Um, the longer garage interior, the reduced square, house square footage going from one bedroom in an office. To two bedrooms and no office. And the removal of the window above the garage. And the addition of the bell course. Those are all listed as conditions of project approval in the resolution approving the project. Um, stormwater would um. Be directed along um underground pipes along either side of the house. It would go into a bioretention area located in the downslope portion of the site. There's only going to be approximately thirty three cubic yards of soil. That would be excavated and hauled off site. Um, all electric construction is proposed. Um, along with solar panels and all exterior lighting would be dark sky compliant. Um, there are some new um uh concrete landscape walls and stairs on the property. And there's also a six foot tall fence constructed on top of two retaining walls that range in height from about two to four and a half feet or. Something like that. So um. This that exceeds the height limit when taken together. So there is a condition of project approval that all fencing comply with the requirements for um fence heights. That are listed in the town code. Um, there are um. A couple of uh northern spotted owl nests that are, they are greater than a quarter of a mile from the property. And the nesting season this year is over for the nor- northern spotted owl. Um, however, there still is a condition. Um. For northern spotted owl in the resolution, because next nesting season, it's not known where the owls may nest, so. We've still included that condition um just to make sure. That construction doesn't affect northern spotted owls. And um the project requires a Hillary residential development permit, a design review permit. And because it is within a ridge line scenic corridor, it requires planning commission consideration of additional design review criteria. As front setback variance is required for new front eaves, it would be approximately one foot from the uh property boundary. Um, the expansion and the garage proposed at the back. Of the house would project into the minimum and combined side yard setbacks. Requiring approval of minimum and combined side dart setback variances. Um, findings can be made to grant the requested entitlements, and those are included in the resolution. Um. So there weren't any. There was one specific condition that uh Ross Valley Fire Department had about the project, and that's included in the resolution. And that is that due to the lack of fire department access to the property, additional fire sprinkler um. Coverage of attics, overhangs, and under decks will be required. And then standard conditions from the water district and the sanitary district have been included in the resolution. So. Staff recommends that the commission move to approve the application number twenty three seventeen. By adopting resolution twenty twenty three fifteen that sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Thank you. Um, does anyone on the commission have questions for staff?
Is it? Could you give me a quick list of the things that are conditions that you've added that are not in the documents? You went through a bunch, and I'm sorry to make you repeat them, but if you could just sort of do me an item list, just so I could. Make sure I understand what you've already required. That would be great.
Sure, no problem. Um, so. It's. Condition. Number one here. Okay, here we go. Um. So it's on, it's on page three of the resolution um. Under the the whereas at the end of the page. Um, there it's condition number one. And it says the project is approved for the colors and material board received by the town on April twelfth, twenty twenty three, the geotechnical report. Or excuse me, geotechnical investigation by Miller Pacific Engineering Group dated October twentieth, twenty twenty two. And the plans prepared by Draft Tech of Marin County. Dated received by the town of Fairfax on June eighth, twenty twenty three, with the following changes. Um, A, the proposed elevation shown on plan pages one, A, five, and six shall eliminate. The window above the garage door and add a belt course to the exterior of the addition, oh, as depicted. In attachment, um, I think, was it? D.
D.
C or D?
D.
D. Okay, sorry about that.
For the next one, when it comes up, which is in paragraph E, it'll be C.
Okay, sorry about that. I did not catch that. Like. Um, the number of bedrooms um on plan page one, A, shall be changed from one bedroom to two bedrooms. The proposed additional square footage in the project table. Data table on plan page one, A, shall be modified from eighty square feet to sixty five square feet. The proposed FAR on plan page one, A, shall be modified to show a total house size of one thousand sixteen square feet and a FAR of fourteen point two percent. The garage shown on plan pages two, three, and four shall have a minimum interior length as measured from the outside surface of the interior walls. Of nineteen feet. And a minimum interior width as measured from the outside surface of the exterior walls. Of nine feet as depicted on attachment C to the staff report. And the room labeled as.
Before you go on to F. So in E, the paren- the second parenthetical says, as measured from the outside surface of the interior walls, not exterior walls, right?
For the interior of the of the garage, yes. So it's measured from. The outside of the, so like these walls in this room, we'd be measuring from.
Exterior, and I wanted, and I read interior, which is why I'm asking you.
So the the in the wall in the wall that defines the garage, the walls that define the garage. Um, there is a a a surface that would be inside the garage, and then there's an exterior outside surface. So I was just trying to make it clear that it had to be measured, the space inside the garage had to accommodate. A nineteen foot length by a nine foot width. The space inside the garage had to accommodate a nineteen foot length by a nine foot width.
And I'd just like to point out that I I think I'm following. And that attachment is different than the architectural plans that are submitted. And I I can see the difference in the dimensions now. I just was trying to follow those.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Sure. And then um, the room labeled office on plan pages two, three and four shall be labeled bedroom two. So I think those were the sort of the changes to the plans that you see before you.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah. If they switch from an office to a bedroom, are there additional changes that are required as a result of calling something a bedroom?
Uh, no, it doesn't affect any uh anything um. Yeah, it doesn't change the parking or anything like that or.
It would, yeah, require egress windows and things like that though, right? If it was a bedroom.
But for for from a building pers- yeah, but it doesn't affect any of the planning commission actions.
Right. The question there is on plans, their plans are going to have to identify and maybe have changes in them. To reflect that that office is now a bedroom. So would require like certain egress windows, things like that. I don't know that those are in the plans or not, but that's something that would need to be considered. If we're taking that office to a bedroom. And I thought I saw an egress window with respect to the office. So maybe it was originally designed with the window where it would have to be as a bedroom. And that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, there there are two windows in the office right now as proposed.
So it just have to be sure that they meet the requirements for a bedroom when the plans are submitted. And not the requirements for an office, which may not have any kind of egress requirements. Right?
So the 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 plan checker, when it comes in labeled a bedroom, they'll make sure that it meets all the requirements for egress. Yeah.
Yeah, and I see on.
Fine, it's not a big, it's not, it's not raised up. You know, there are ways to do it without significant.
I mean.
Yeah, if you look at the north elevation, there's windows that are likely sized for egress. And I don't think it will make a difference on the planning uh review.
Okay, I think. Page two of the uh plan at the top of the left side of the. Existing main floor plan, is that right? It has office egress. You guys see that? Egress window at office. Anyway, okay, thank you. That was my only question on that. Was that the only question, Commissioner Newton? Okay, any other questions? Okay, I have a question. Um, the staff report discusses the story polls. And the story poll for the garage had been lowered from the original height. Um, based on neighbors' concerns. Did staff receive any emails or phone calls or anything else from anyone? Um, related to the project outside of the discussion in the staff report that the applicant met with the neighbors?
Um, uh. Planner Neil received a one phone call, I believe, from a neighbor. Yeah, it was a while ago. Just uh the height.
And that was before they lowered it.
Yeah, yeah. So Planner Neil, uh, oh, sorry.
I received one call, but it was before they lowered it.
That's what I was trying to get to, whether that was before or after the. The height was lowered. Thank you.
The call was actually from a neighbor that wasn't concerned about the project, but that was that was concerned that the height was going to be a problem for some of the other neighbors. That's what the call I received was. And her concern was that one of the neighbors is often often out of the country. But that neighbor that's out of the country was contacted and and okayed the the plan.
A change. Okay, all right. Um. If no other questions for staff, um. If the applicant would come up. If the applicant's here and we could. So if there's anything you wanted to um tell us about the project and then be there if there's any questions from the commission for you. And if you could just mention your name.
Yeah, my name's uh, good evening. My name's Dave McNutt. I'm uh the owner and um the owner of Thirty Park Lane. Um, I don't want to ramble on, but uh Cara kind of painted a pretty good picture. Uh, house has been in my family for a long time. Uh, the original construction was contiguous with uh the rest of Fairfax Homes. Which is old, um, you know, built in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, walls are not plum. Uh, timber is uh true dimensional. Um, you know, things are i- i- you know, dilapidated at best. Um. It's a relatively small home. What exists still is a foundation that was um structurally uh inspected by my structural engineer, Greg Miller. Um, which he saw and felt that the existing foundation was adequate based on his inspections. That it could see uh the same, if not similar, load back onto that um foundation. Um, the addition being the single car garage and uh. The master closet is going to be on top of a foundation that Miller Pacific did the geotechnical report on. That's going to consist of nine piers, um approximately thirty feet deep. So uh very consistent and very strong to support uh a single car garage and a closet. Um, as far as the windows uh issue, uh the minimum size egress windows uh for any office or bedroom dwelling. Is five point seven square feet. Uh, those windows, I have the window report and they are six point six square feet. So they are continuous and uh um fit that criteria as far as egress. Um. I don't want to ramble. Um, so if you guys have any questions for me, um, I got answers.
Any questions from the commission for the applicant?
I have questions about parking. Where do you get a park?
So there's two parking spots. There's one in front that's triangular in shape, um, which fits the nineteen by ten foot minimum size. Uh, parking spot for a car and that is uncovered. The second parking spot is in that single car garage, which is uh been depicted as nineteen by ten. Uh, square feet. Um, sorry, not square feet, nineteen by ten feet. Um, so we had to reduce the size of that master closet, essentially moving that interior wall that separates master closet. And uh, single car garage, reducing that master closet from eighty square feet to sixty five square feet to give me that nineteen by ten. Um, so that's the second parking spot. And then the third, which is for guests, is right in easement, which lies perpendicular to the entrance of the garage.
Yeah, um, so people going up the stairs, you're gonna have to kind of go around those cars?
Uh, stairs where?
The, aren't there stairs that lead down to scenic beyond your property?
No.
Oh, I thought there was a stairs that went down to down.
No, that's just uh, so the um, so what goes down to scenic is obviously uh my my parcel. There's no stairs that go down to scenic, because it's just my parcel. It's my parcel, a ten foot uh sewer easement. And then the uh parcel right next to it.
I thought there maybe uh, yeah, I thought, so there's a path that goes down.
Yeah, there's a path that goes down Park Lane.
So is is your that parking spot for your guests?
No.
Is it on that path?
No.
Okay.
No, it's 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 on the other side.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant?
As far as design, um, tried to, my attempt was to keep it relatively straightforward. Um, obviously, we're in the wooey, so we have tempered um uh windows all around. Uh, you know, hardy siding, hardy fascer boards, um, enclosed eaves, which uh the fire department's going to request. Um, the paint are all neutral colors, um, which um, in in my opinion, are kind of consistent with the surrounding area. I think there's other houses in this round area that um are a bit more vibrant colors. But um, for the most part, I think my neighbor has a gray house. Um, that's pretty consistent with the the color of my siding. Um. Any questions as far as uh the the design of the home or reasons why? That's all, yeah.
All right.
If that's it for me, that's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So now we're going to open it up to public comment. If there's anyone in the room that wants to make a comment on this application. Please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
I do have one hand online. And Ray, you are able to talk. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my name is Ray Arada and my wife Anna and I live at Twenty Park Lane. Uh, right next to David. And uh, I just want to own a bias quickly here that um we completed a project and we're before this commission. And so um, I just needed to say that to get that out of the way. Um, David's been very communicative and accommodating this this through this whole process. And of all the properties up here that uh are would be most affected by his garage is us. And we have no issue. We have a fence. We've looked at it from our from our bedroom to see if it encroaches on our privacy and that such is not the case. And probably the most important thing that I would say, with all due respect to you, David, the house was a matchbox and it was unsafe up here. And the fact that he's going to be doing this project conforming to what all of you are asking him to do makes it a safer place up here. So my wife Anna, who's here with me, we we trust David and we are in favor of this project and have no issues whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I see no more hands online.
All right, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Or a motion?
I can make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three fifteen. Um, application number twenty three seventeen for a hill area residential development permit. Design review permit, front setback variance and minimum and combined side set side yard setback variances. For the rebuild and expansion of the demolished single family residence at Thirty Park Lane. Um, I have no further amendments, so I am asking for approval of the resolution.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ellie?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pepper?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi.
Motion carries. There's a ten day appeal process. Um, and information can be obtained from the planning department. Thank you. Thank you. So our next item on the agenda is thirty four Hill Avenue, application twenty three eighteen. Can we get a staff report, please?
Sorry. Are you ready? Okay, so this project encompasses construction of a one thousand three hundred and eighteen square foot, two bedroom, three. Two-story, three-bedroom, two and a half bathroom, single-family residence with an attached three hundred and forty square foot one-car garage. And two uncovered parking spaces located within the west side yard. So a little background, after the town had deemed this project complete and had accepted the recorded boundary survey prepared by a licensed land surveyor. The owners of the neighboring property at thirty two Hill Avenue presented the town with a recorded boundary survey of their property. Showing the western side property line in a different location than the applicant's recorded survey. Staff contacted the applicant and advised him that we were unwilling to take the project before the commission. Now that we were in possession of two conflicting surveys that show the proposed project having a different project site square footage. And different minimum and combined side yard setbacks. Our hope was that the two owners would meet and come to an agreement on a final location for the western side property line. Avoiding the planning commission have to act on what might not, what might, what might not end up being the final project minimum and combined setbacks. Right? In June, the owners posted the project site and sent out a notice advising all agencies with jurisdiction over the project and the town. That after sixty days, his project would be deemed complete in accordance with government code section six, five, nine, five, six B. If the town did not hold a public hearing on the proposal. Town's legal counsel advised staff to schedule the project for a public hearing and to review the application based on the applicant's submitted boundary survey. Which was reviewed and accepted as complete by our town surveyor. So the project requires the approval of several discretionary permits by the planning commission, including a conditional use permit. Because of the site's small size. A tree removal permit, because trees will need to be removed to accommodate the house footprint and parking. And a design review permit, because the project is for a new house. And a minimum and combined side yard setback, because the proposed house projects into the required setbacks on this site, which is triangular shaped. Um, and it was created in nineteen oh eight, so parcels were a lot smaller back then. The project complies with all with the minimum combined, the minimum and combined front and rear setback requirements, the floor area limitation. Uh, regulation, the lot coverage limitation and the height limits for the RD five point five dash residential zone where the property is located. The proposed two-story residential structure maintains a similar height to the residential structure located immediately west of the project site at thirty two Hill Avenue. The proposed structure maintains the smallest three-foot, ten and a half inch side yard setback from the east side prop. East property line adjacent to the project applicant's residence in San Anselmo. The larger ten-foot setback is proposed from the west side property line, which still results in the proposed house being nine feet, one inch. From the nearest adjacent residential structure at thirty two Hill Avenue, which based on the applicant's survey, projects over that property line. Onto the project site. The project is similar in size to other residential structures on similar sized and level lots within the immediate neighborhood. Um, if you look at the staff report, there's a table and there really, there are. Four other houses that are on very similar sized lots that are either about the same or larger than this house, right? Uh, with regards to the, okay, so houses in the neighborhood range in size from six hundred and forty-four square feet on a three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square foot. Site with a floor area ratio of point two oh to a two thousand one hundred and seventy-one square foot. House on a three thousand two hundred and forty square foot site, which has an FAR of point six seven. So this is kind of in the middle, you know, um. With regards to the design review permit, the exterior of the structures articulated with various pitched roof lines, reaching different maximum elevations at their peaks. Varied window sizes and shapes, a terrace off the rear of the second floor that steps down to a rear deck off the first floor. A stepped front wall with the east side of the structure where the front door is proposed set three feet further south than the rest of the facade. The roof peaks run north, south, so that the shorter portions of the building and the building eaves face the neighboring properties to minimize the structure's impacts. On the neighboring residential sites. The north side of the structure is articulated with the design stepping the front wall back from the street and the east side stepping the side. Stepping back from the side property line in three locations as the house follows the angled eastern side property line. The rear south side of the house is articulated with. The rear south side of the house is articulated with the deck and the patio. The articulation on the west side of the structure is not as pronounced, although the four proposed windows, the copper gutters and the stepped roof line and patio and deck do break up the massing of that side of the structure. The applicant, the applicant's landscaping plan also increa- incre- uh, includes screening plants along the west side of the site and on a along a portion of the residents on that west side to try to, um, kind of, provide some kind of a buffer. Um, three exterior lights are proposed on the front of the house, on the east side of the front entry door and on either side of the garage, and one exterior light is proposed at the rear of the house on the west side of the first floor door that accesses the rear deck. The design and landscaping of the proposed project meets the design review criteria contained in the town code and complies with the purpose of the design review ordinance, which is to foster a good design character through consideration of aesthetic and functional relationships to surrounding development and in order to further enhance the town's appearance and livability and usefulness of properties. The Fairfax Tree Committee removed the tree, reviewed the tree removal application for the project at their April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-second meeting and recommended that the commission approve the tree removal requests with no special conditions. Although not required for level, uh, relatively level properties when applying for a conditional use permit, the applicant provided the town with a drainage report and a drainage plan uh, due to the immediate neighborhoods, uh, in both Fairfax and San Anselmo. There are drainage issues in this whole neighborhood. And the drainage issues have been occurring for a long time, and it's not the responsibility of one homeowner to address these issues alone. As indicated in a letter from Mr. O'Brien, the owner of thirty-two Hill Avenue, which is the house to the west, he cites the Public Works Director in San Anselmo advising that the uphill drainage that that has been directed into the Fairfax Tract subdivision has led to flooding in the immediate area and that addressing the problem would involve both the town of San Anselmo and Fairfax and require require large-scale infrastructure improvements. And our town engineer and Public Works Director agree with that, that comment. Best management drainage practice policies in California require that a project not increase the speed, amount or direction of existing water flows. The town engineer has reviewed the drainage plan, which will allow the existing water coming to the site from Hill Avenue to continue its current path. So it's not redirecting it onto any of the neighbors' properties. It's gonna flow the way it does now. And it's going to be get, um, the driveway is gonna be permeable, which will allow the water with a drop inlet at the south end of the driveway. So the water will continue to seep into this, into the ground. And then, um, the wolf water will be collected and it all will be shot back to the back corner where it currently ends up anyway, and there's going to be a, um, a, uh, water detention trench that's gonna slow it down before it leaves the site. So the town engineer has reviewed the project plans by applicant architect John Semenek and the engineering plans by DVC Group, the drainage report by DVC Group, and has determined that the project has been designed in a manner that will protect the health, welfare and safety of the public. Adjacent properties are adequately protected by the project investigation and design from geologic hazards. Adjacent properties, including the public road, are adequately protected by the project design from drainage and erosion problems. And the amount of excavation and fill is not more than is required to allow the property owner a substantial use of their property. As discussed, it also requires variances. And I just wanted to point out that this, the property owner, the applicant has has placed the house closest to his house, which is at fifteen Ramona and San Anselmo. So there's a three-foot-ten-and-a-half-inch setback from the house towards his house. The larger ten-foot setback has been placed between the house at thirty-two Hill, which depending upon who, which survey you look at, it either goes to the property line or it extends over the property line onto the project site, right? So the the setback that's going to be maintained by the new house from the structure is nine feet, one inch. That that's the setback, whether the prop, you know, if we're we're processing it based on the applicant's survey. Okay, the applicant's survey says the neighbor's house projects over the property line, but it still maintains a nine, the new house will maintain a nine-foot, one-inch setback from that house at thirty-two. The Ross Valley Fire Department has the following specific condition for the project. They would like a twenty-foot-wide fire lane, uh, because the road has to be widened to twenty feet and must be serviceable in compliance with Ross Valley Stan Fire Standard two-ten along the site frontage prior to delivery of combustibles to the site. And a fire sprinkler system that comply complies with the National Fire Protection Association thirteen-D and local standards must be installed and requires a separate permit from the Ross Valley Fire Department. Marin Municipal Water District placed a condition on that all plant material must be irrigated with low-water-use irrigation system that must comply with the Marin Municipal Water District landscaping water conservation requirements that can be found online. We put the link in the staff report. And the building official, public works manager, uh, included the condition that a code-compliant sidewalk and gutter must be installed along the entire property frontage. No comments were received from any other, um, agencies or departments. And we did receive a number of letters from the neighbors, which you have, which you have all of them, right? Some of them, uh, seem to have not reviewed the plans. I mean, there was one that talked about is the is the garage and is the garage gonna be below ground and it's not gonna be below ground? Um, so anyway, we're recommending that you approve Application twenty-three eighteen based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the attached Resolution twenty-two-three dash sixteen. And that would conclude our report.
Have any questions for staff? From the commission?
I'm going to bring up the story polls. What has the neighborhood been able to review physically out there? It sounds like maybe something has been done now, but not maybe at the typical time that we would require story polls.
That's correct. Usually we require the story polls to go up ten days before the meeting. I think now the applicant has marked the corners of the house on the ground and the plans have been available, you know, for for since Friday. Yeah. Um, but you might check with the applicant because he was gonna try to do some other things. I'm not, he probably, I don't know how much he's got done, but. Yeah, and I just wanted to explain the story poll thing. That was a, that was a, I don't quite know how to describe it, but it was a, it was a direction given to staff to include that requirement in our application form, you know, quite a while ago by the planning commission. But it wasn't a formal condition or it's not codified. And it wasn't a formal condition that was like adopted through a resolution by the by the commission. So it's, um, you know, it's, well, that's enough, enough said about the story polls. You know, they are helpful, you know. I I personally just, I look at a lot of plans though, so it's easier for me. But I think he did some really nice drawings from the front and the back that show the proximity of the neighbor's house and the relationship of the heights, you know, in the drawings. But.
But are the, were those of public record at all?
Uh, so he he had it, he had the front elevation in the regular plans that are, that have been available since, they've been online since Saturday, right? These latest ones that he just submitted for the back. I don't, I don't think you showed the back, did you? Yeah.
Yeah, so but the neighbors have not been able to review that over that ten-day period that we typically require the story polls, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just trying to understand the the lay of the land here.
Any other questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, one of the neighbors sent in a question about the difference in the survey lot boundary uh, between the two neighbors and asking if that new lot line that, you know, the the applicant has submitted, extends beyond the property. Am I getting that correct? So, and I just wanted to know, Linda, if you have any answer about that.
No, it does not. So this is, this is a civil matter, this pro, this western or the the side property line location dispute, right, is a civil matter between the two property owners. But wherever it lands, it doesn't necessarily change anything for the for the existing developed parcels. It's just gonna change that that bound, that side boundary line between the two parcels. And and as it's a civil matter, our attorney has directed us to go forward with the applicant's survey, which our our surveyor has accepted. Right, then whatever decision you make, whoever's unhappy with it can appeal it to the council. And then, once the council makes a decision, then they end up in court because you have to exhaust your your local, you know, process, right, before you can end up and take one of these disputes before a judge. So if they can't come to some kind of a compromise, they may end up in court.
Okay, and then, uh, another neighbor had suggested that this applicant was subject to different standards than usual applicants. Did you understand to what they were?
I did not have time to read all the stuff that was coming in at the end of the day. So they were alleging that staff somehow was treating this applicant differently.
That they were subject to different standards than a typical applicant, and I just wanted to clarify.
No, the only, the only thing that happened different with this is that they, so the town is supposed to review and act on it. We're supposed to deem an application to complete and then we're supposed to, we're supposed to get it to a public hearing and get action taken on it within sixty days, right? I believe I did not make the right decision and probably should have talked to the town attorney. I deemed it complete and then the neighbor submitted the conflicting survey, changing the property line location, right? So at that point, I was hoping the neighbors would work it out. They would talk about it and figure out, uh, uh, agree on a location, right? Well, that did not happen. And the applicant availed himself, which is within his rights, to post the property and notify everybody that if the town didn't put him on a hearing, right? Within a certain amount of time, he, the project gets automatically approved. So we're doing what our attorney told us to do and take it forward based on the survey that was submitted with the application that was accepted by our town surveyor. Right, that's what we're acting on. The conflicting survey doesn't have any basis on your decision. You're supposed to be making your decision based on the plans in front of you. Because it's a civil matter, the civil, the dispute is a civil matter, which will be worked out later on. And if it ends up, the the decision, uh, changes setbacks or something for the house, right? I think he's gonna have to come back. Right?
Commissioner Chance?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a similar question, but I do have to follow on. You said earlier, it does not affect the current plan, but the, the property line, if the property line would shift three feet, it does impact the side setback.
Maybe I misspoke. What I'm saying is, our direction is to go forward with the plans that we have.
Okay.
We aren't supposed, you aren't supposed to, the civil matter is not something for you to think about or even consider while you're looking at this.
Right, right now, if it changes, then the plans will change.
Yes, it will change the setbacks, but but we don't know what the judge would do. I mean, the judge, I've had, I've had judges decide property line disputes, not necessarily in a way that was very logical.
No, 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 if it changes, this change, the plan has to change, but if it doesn't, it doesn't, or whatever, okay, thank you.
Variance would be null and void because the amounts that you granted the variance for would no longer be valid. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Yep, um, one question on the drainage issues and drainage concerns. Um, you noted in the staff report and the town engineer reviewing the drainage plan saying that this uh, proposed project won't alter the water flow or drainage as currently is. Does that consider, you know, normal? When, does that normal winter season or if there's?
Based on a one-hundred-year flood is what our engineer, has their engineer address.
So this won't affect the way water would flow even in a one-hundred-year flood event?
It's not, it's supposed to be able to deal with it, right? But I mean, you know, drainage
Yeah.
can change, right? You get a five-hundred-year flood, right? Yeah.
I wanna clarify that. So is water allowed to run off of this site onto the neighboring site?
Water runs across it now and and you know, it's the natural flow. It comes down from from over on Willow, down through the neighborhoods. You know, some of the, the street has directed a lot of the flow down to this site and neighbors have told me that the old owners would work with them. They would, they would divert it through this site, so this site will not change what's established there now according to our engineer. Was based on, was based on a design by an engineer and sec, you know, reviewed by our engineer who believes that it will keep the system functioning the way it does now. Right, there's already a problem, though. You're gonna hear from the neighbors. They already have problems, but that's not property.
So I have a question. I just had another one and it just went out, but on the, um, on the staff report, I just wanted to clarify on page three, the second paragraph down where it talks about maintaining a ten-foot setback from the west side and a thirteen-foot setback from the east side, that thirteen foot should be three.
Yes. Did you want me to go through all my corrections? I wasn't gonna do that. There were a lot of corrections, which I have noted and I will.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Like twenty-nine Hills supposed to be thirty-two.
And I had a question on the fire road, so you said that the street would have to be widened.
That's what they mean.
So when I look at Hill, at the end of Hill, it turns into Ramona and Ramona goes up behind, um, the lodge and the preschool or daycare center. And there are bollards there between there and the rest of Ramona. So are they talking about that piece?
They're talking about.
They're talking the exact front
of the property, just along the frontage, twenty feet.
And what is there now, do you know?
Uh, I think we measured it at like fifteen or sixteen feet when we went out there, the building official and I. So it's not twenty feet right now, but it's, you know, it's not too far off. There's room to, there's room to do it.
So the sidewalks would have, the sidewalks and all would have to be moved?
No, there's, uh, I'm not sure what you mean. There are no sidewalks across the street.
Well, there's, there's a sidewalk planned
Yeah.
for this application.
There's room for the twenty feet and then four feet of sidewalk and it'll go around that hole and the fire hydrant. But the building official measured it and said, there's room, you just have to have three feet. He he verified that there's room for the sidewalk that he required and room for the twenty-foot-wide fire road within the roadway easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one more, uh, small question. The, it states that the the side setback on the, so that would be the east side, I think, is three-ten or three-ten and a half. Um, according to sheet A-one-one-zero, it's three-eight and a half. No, it's directly to the corner of what is the living space.
Okay, which sheet are you on?
Uh, A-one-one-zero, detail three. It's the last minute, the lot. Right, when it tapers down, it gets narrower.
Eight and a half, yeah, I was not looking at the right place.
Okay, if there's no more questions for staff, if we could have the applicant come up, if he would like to provide any information on the project and then be there to answer any of our questions.
All right, how's that? Do you guys hear me? Okay, Linda, thank you so much uh, for the introduction and uh, writing the report on the project. I really appreciate it. Uh, my name is John Semenek. I'm the owner and the architect and the applicant for uh, the proposed project at thirty four Hill Avenue. Uh, just want to start out, um, and say, you know, thank you for everyone for their time here tonight. This this project's really been a long time in the making. I put a lot of time and effort into it, and so it really means a lot for me to be here presenting this to you and to have your time and attention. So thank you. Um, my partner Lindsay and I over there, um, we moved, uh, we live right over, right next door, fifteen Ramona Way. We moved in at the end of twenty twenty, after being denied by about fifteen times uh, for getting a house. So uh, when we landed this house and moved to this neighborhood, we were so excited. We love it here. Um, we love living there, love living here, and we uh, we plan to be here for a long time. I'm not just some, you know, developer flipper who's trying to come to the neighborhood and and make a house and move along. We want to be here for a long time, and we want to make a positive mark on the neighborhood and the community. Um, and with that, in terms of making a a positive impact on the neighborhood and the community, um, as residential architects, um, I can think of no better way to serve the community by sensibly adding housing, especially uh, in a community uh, that so desperately needs it. Um, so I'm gonna start off, uh, I'm not gonna, you know, reiterate everything Linda said, but I'm gonna try to highlight some of the points here. Uh, so the first thing to cite, the sites in the RD five point five dash seven zone, which is the residential high density zone. Um, again, the parcels in the residential subdivision, and it's in a subdivision of houses built largely on non-conforming parcels. And not only non-conforming parcels, um, there is precedent for houses being built on uh, parcels of similar non-conforming size. Um, the parcel is relatively flat. It's not on a hillside. It's not in a woo wee woo wee zone. It's not in a FEMA flood zone, and it's not on a ridge line. Um, so in terms of, you know, appropriateness uh, for a place to put a house, like it's hard to think of a better one. Um, so now I'll talk about kind of the the rough building design and kind of how that all came together. Um, so, you know, prior to putting pencil to paper, I was given uh, letters uh, that were sent to the planning department, uh, highlighting some neighbor concerns about the site, chief one being water. Um, and so I don't want to spend too much time on that tonight. Uh, when I got that notification, um, I hired a well-tenured civil engineer um, to help come up with a drainage plan uh, that I knew, you know, that he knew wouldn't negatively uh, burden uh, the neighbors with the development. And uh, my engineer has worked, you know, uh, through a couple iterations of the design with the town engineer to come up with something that I think works. Um, my neighbors at thirty two Hill Avenue have enjoyed this uh, empty parcel, you know, since they moved here. Um, you know, back in nineteen ninety eight, I think is what they said. Um, had a list, a long list of concerns, um, and I've tried to address them all. Um, so briefly go through the design. So uh, the parcel's a small kind of rectangular shape. Um, and uh, I've tried to cite the structure as far away as possible uh, from the neighbor's house. Um, there's a fifteen foot setback line. I gave him ten feet, trying to push that house as close to my house as possible. In terms of the overall form of the house, I tried to do something that complements the neighborhood. It's not, you know, some crazy modern design. It's a simple gable form. Um, so something that, you know, fits in with the neighborhood. Um, I tried to place the entry to the house on the east side to help provide, you know, privacy from my neighbors to the west. Uh, tried to strategically place windows so that, you know, um, you know, my neighbors can't see into the, you know, the common or public areas of the home. Um, you know, some of the concerns, other concerns are parking. Um, I've, you know, applying for three, you know, code compliance spaces. Uh, you know, I am asking for a parking variance, but if you, you know, walk down any of the streets, I think you'll find, you know, a large precedent for that. Um, in terms of the materiality, uh, Linda, I think you had some comments uh, on this. Um, I wanted to use uh, natural materials, but you know, maybe in a little bit of a modern way. And one of the precedents I took was actually from a house which was recently finished in Fairfax on Thirty Nine Wood Lane. It's dark wood siding with a contrasting cedar uh, wood. And so that's what I've, you know, tried to to mimic. Now, I know Fairfax doesn't want to see, you know, every house be black in Fairfax, but you know, that one's a ways away. Uh, and so, you know, the goal of using these materials is using timeless materials, but in kind of a contemporary way on a traditional form. Um, and so that's what I've tried to do. Um, and so, you know, just to kind of close up before, you know, questions, I'm sure you have a lot of them. Um, I'm sure my neighbors have a lot of things they want to say. Um, this, this is really a dream project for me. Um, I've been trying to save up as an architect. I've been trying to save up, and it's been my dream to, you know, build my own house. Uh, and so, you know, I want this to be a portfolio piece, uh, something I can use to hopefully start a solo career. And so it really means a lot to me. Um, and I really want this to be something that, you know, looks good for the neighborhood, something that benefits the community. Um, and something, you know, I've kind of poured my heart and soul into. So, um, with that, I want to open it up for questions. I know you guys probably have a lot of them, so thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I have a quick one. Uh, did you or have you spoken with the neighbors at fifty nine Bell or sixteen Pastory about your project?
Sixty past story.
Essentially, the two buildings that uh, at the point of the triangle to the south of you.
Yes, I have. Wait, uh, would that be? Let me go back. At the beginning of my application, I I have all the uh, neighbors that I spoke to.
It's, it's the two properties that um, share your eastern boundary to the south of you. So presumably, it's where the water.
Fifty nine Bell, are you talking about Barbara? Yes, yes, I spoke with Barbara very early on in the project.
That story, I just wondered if you'd spoken with them about your project, and particularly about the water.
Uh, Patricia, I spoke with Patricia at fifty nine Bell Ave on uh, three fifteen twenty two. Uh, I met with her. Um, overall, she didn't have any concerns with the project, um, and I actually say it here in the application. Um, you know, she did explain that there, you know, sometimes the lower part of the street floods. I asked her, I said, has your house ever flooded? Has it ever come close to flooding? Any issues there? She said, no, you know, sometimes it comes up, you know, to my first step, but my house has never flooded. Um, and I explained that, you know, I I still did hire a civil engineer because Barbara, who lives right next door, has water concerns. And uh, she didn't express any other uh, concerns with me or the, or the projects.
What about the other one at sixteen Pastory?
Yes, uh, Barbara's here tonight. Hey, Bar. Uh, yes, I did speak with Barbara. Um, she does express concerns uh, about water and how, uh, I think it's more the eastern part floods, and so you had to, you know, raise up your trees. Yeah. That's right. Yeah. Um, so yes, I I did.
Okay, and my understanding of your drainage plan, I've been poring over it here
Yeah.
For the last few minutes. Um, is you're detaining as much water as um, probably reasonably possible on the, on the edge of your site. So it will slow down, the intent of it, of that system is to slow down the water.
That's right.
Sort of crossing your lot, certainly more than it is now, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hmm. Uh, my, my civil engineer believes that the condition will be better than it is now. Um, that's what he's explaining to me in terms of, you know, the whole drainage design. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I had a, I had one. Um, on the thirty two hillside
Yes.
Of the property. That's where you've got your uncovered parking.
Correct.
Right? So can you explain to me along that bump out of thirty two, what you're building or what your um, parcel is gonna look like? It looks like from the drawings that you've got a fence or a gate in front of the parking.
That's correct.
So where does that lead?
Mm-hmm.
And then um, what if any blockage is there and or and what's gonna be along that bump out of thirty two?
Yeah, uh, so the intent there is to have permeable paving, which slopes away uh, from Aaron and Kelly's house. So it'll slope towards my house. So um, at the west side of my house and the east side of Aaron and Kelly's house, the permeable paving will slope down to a planted area.
Okay, so you'll have a gate?
Correct. There's, there's a drain at the base of the gate, which will collect any residual water which comes down um, the driveway. Um, and then beyond the gate is more permeable paving, which again, you know, slopes away from Aaron and Kelly's house and also slopes down um, towards the back of the property.
Okay, and the distance between your building and that bump out would be how much?
Uh, nine feet, one inch.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and the windows that you have on that side?
Yes.
Those are windows from your bedrooms, your bathrooms, or?
Uh, required egress windows uh, from bedrooms.
Okay, so those windows up there would be bedroom windows on that side.
Um, and you'll notice I I superimpose my neighbor's house over the elevation to kind of show you where bedroom windows are in relation to the existing windows at the neighbors and so.
Okay, all right. I think those are the only questions I have right now for you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment period on this application. So if anyone would like to come up and speak, please come up and then just state your name.
Good evening. Close enough. I'm Aaron O'Brien. Uh, my wife Kelly and I own the adjacent property at thirty two Hill Avenue. We appreciate the opportunity to provide these comments and hope that the planning commission has reviewed our letter with more details. Uh, hopefully you guys have that three-page letter we just came in today. Uh, it's got lots more details on all of these issues. Briefly, uh, they include the differing surveys for both properties, the need for two-story story poles to really look at the structure, the reality of the storm water that we're really looking through this lot, and I'll get into a little more of the details on that tonight. Uh, the potential parking restrictions with the construction, uh, and the potential for additional space around the corner, uh, and the dark color of the building combined with the blockage of the natural light for our house. Uh, I'd also like to address some of what I'm just gonna say are alternative facts here, uh, with other drainage engineers and surveyors. Uh, first, it was very disappointing to review the staff report that recommends you approve the project at this stage. The town of Fairfax had specifically requested that the owner of thirty four Hill work with us to solve the boundary line dispute and need for easements before approving any project. Our house opens right up. Our basement opens right up onto this lot. There's no way that we can access even our basic utilities underneath our basement without going onto their property. So clearly, there are easements necessary for that. Uh, not to even mention that they're now claiming that the house is actually on their lot. Uh, their legal bullying really has resulted in the planning commission holding this very meeting tonight because they were threatened with automatic project approval if they did not. The town of Fairfax can do better than this, and it is out of character from the standard requirements that everyone else has to comply with, particularly with the story poles. A little more on the survey. The survey issues we've identified in the letter are key, and we truly believe that our survey is better as it uses much broader and permanent historical markers and maintains the lot lines throughout the block, while theirs uses a historical railroad tie that we actually installed as garden edging and has nothing to do with the lot lines. Furthermore, when I read one of the letters that came in today, they found new evidence, uh, which was based on how, what the dimensions of that pullout were. Uh, but I don't think that's a whole lot better than our edge of the garden. So these surveyors don't have good monuments here. They're looking for any line of evidence to try and figure out where these lines are. Normally, I'm an engineer. I work with surveyors. They have monuments generally. They can give us maps that really look like facts. Uh, but here, their surveyors are dealing in an opinion. Uh, so their survey strategy has the potential to change all the lot lines on the south side of Hill Avenue. I know that Linda mentioned that that was not her understanding, but our survey, after having sat down with them for forty five minutes in a CAD program, what he did was he went all the way around, all downhill avenue, all the way over Bell and used the concrete curves. So probably the biggest historical markers you're gonna get, uh, and found almost perfect matching up with the sister's parcel number. Uh, because we believe our surveyor has merit and that these issues should be dealt with before construction begins, we intend to appeal to the town council if you approve this project out tonight and are also considering an injunction against the product until our survey can be reviewed through the courts, and we can work through some of these easements. Thankfully, the title insurance stepped up and helped us with the surveyor, and we're hoping that they're also gonna help out with court calls. For the story poles, the planning commissioners cannot see how big the structure would be. I know I've seen you guys out there. Uh, we do have the demarcations now, which is helpful to at least see how close it is to things, but without seeing how big the house is next to ours, because it's pretty much as big as our house, uh, and how close particularly that second-story deck is to our bedroom, uh, it's hard to really get a sense for what we're really in for. Uh, one of the comments here I read was that you need to avoid the wires. We've got wires that come to our house from there. Uh, I think that it makes sense that maybe they might have some areas that didn't have two-story story poles, because I'm not, certainly not gonna advocate that they need to get too close to the wires. Uh, a little bit on the drainage. The drainage is a very significant issue here. Uh, I put some calculations in my comments and more information on it, but what the biggest part that I want to present here is that their engineer who came in and gave you this drainage report, all he did was calculate the water that was falling on their lot. It completely ignored all of the water that's coming from the streets above and from all the roofs above. Uh, another alternative fact is that all of the bigger problems in San Anselmo are related to this. That was from a previous comment that I made, and it was really related to the flooding further downhill avenue, which is separate. Uh, that's connected to the main storm Fairfax Storm Rain System, which has all sorts of issues. Those aren't gonna get solved today. Uh, maybe Fairfax might be responsible for some storm water management, but I, you know, even if you wanted to put a catch basin at the end of the street, you couldn't just run it down to the catch basin in the middle because it's already overwhelmed. Uh, the calculations that I presented are are minimal and simple, and we calculated that about ten thousand square feet of impermeable surface with the roadways at the end of Hill that drained of this area, the end of Ramona, the connection, the roofs, you can get up to about ten thousand square feet pretty easy. That's just the impermeable stuff. Six inches of rain on ten thousand square feet gives us five thousand cubic feet of water. I know we don't like to deal in cubic feet. Uh, that's about a little over thirty five thousand gallons of water in a six-inch storm. We got a ten-inch storm a couple of years ago, so I don't even think that that really qualifies as a hundred-year storm. So we've got tens of thousands of gallons of water coming down this lot, and their report does not address that at all. Uh, the neighbors have been told that they were safe from a hundred-year flood, uh, but only using that data from their own lot. So I think that there's no way to develop this property without increasing the water flow. The reality is, is we've been managing this property for twenty years as essentially a storm water infiltration basin. Uh, thousands of gallons are absorbed by it. Really, the first day they're out there with an excavator, they're gonna remove all that loose organic carbon from the topsoil, and all of the water is just gonna run right off. Uh, the last, last part I'm getting into is that it's just particularly frustrating that all of these arguments that we listed in our comments that we've been going through could be addressed quickly and without even disrupting their current design. For the most part, their design is okay with us. Uh, we'd be willing to split the difference in the back corner for a fence between the surveys and the easements just aren't that complicated. I mean, honestly, all this seems so unnecessary because these problems are solvable. We just can't seem to get everyone on the same page for facts. Uh, thanks again for your consideration of this. Uh, I hope that we are able to at least get the facts straight uh, before we deal with any approvals. Uh, do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public like to comment?
I'm Barbara Schindelis. I live at sixteen Pastory in San Anselmo. My neighbor Pat Silva is right across my driveway, and her house, just so you know, is only a seven hundred square foot house. It's almost on the ground. It has no crawl space underneath or anything that uh, would allow water to go through there. So she and I are both on the same page as far as water issues. This last winter, we had a pretty good winter, and so my pump was going twenty-four seven during the rain. Um, I have already put in three drainage pipes that go from the corner of my property at the very back, all the way to the street with a fifty-five gallon tank. Another one goes through the middle of the property. Another one goes through the middle of the property, and the other one goes through the far end of the property, and those two converge to another fifty-five-gallon tank that's on the street level. Unfortunately, the street is already above us, so when it's raining really hard, the pumps just pump it out and it comes right back on. So a couple of years ago, before the drought, I had so much water under my house that I was worried, and I called nine-one-one, and Channel Seven came out, and it was within inches of my floor. So I am very concerned about adding anymore. I don't know how you can direct any more away from my house. I've already done everything I can, and I have seven neighbors that drain into me, so I just don't see if there's any more water at all that we're gonna be able to handle it, my neighbor Pat and myself. So that's my main concern. I don't mind them by building a house. I don't care what the house looks like. I just am really worried about the water situation. I'm old, I'll die, but my sons live there too, and my granddaughter lives there. So we're probably gonna own that house for a long time, and I really want you guys to take that seriously as a potential problem for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Egger again met away. I just thought I'd make a couple of comments. I'm here for another issue, but for decades, we had drainage problems with the Hill area, Hill Avenue neighborhood. I mean, it's just, I don't know if it's solvable or not. But this, you know, it's a tiny little lot, thirty-three hundred square feet. And a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath is a pretty large house, a tiny little lot, you know. This might be in a the setbacks in a staff report are pretty misleading because of the size of that lot. I mean, it's a it's a crazy-looking lot. You know, kind of a little, I don't know what you call it, but forty-seven feet in the top and three feet to zero feet at the bottom going or whatever. It seems that that might be an ideal lot for a little two-bedroom, one-bath affordable cottage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from?
Hello, my name is Diane Nichols. I live at one-twenty-one Oak Knoll Avenue, which is, there's the lot that you're talking about tonight, then there's John's house at fifteen Ramona, and then I'm right behind his house. So I just had a couple of questions and a couple of comments regarding the parking variance. I'm a little concerned about that in terms of the Ross Valley Fire Department having access to any fires on Hill or also fires on Oak Knoll. Right now, there's always packed parking on Hill. And even people that have off-the-street parking, they have guests, they have people that are visiting, et cetera, people that are working on their homes, and that street's always packed. So I can't imagine having more parking on there. And then I noticed that three of the people, the neighbors on Ramona, that said they had no concerns with the building, they all park right in front of my house on Oak Knoll. They don't, they park sometimes in front of their own houses on Ramona, but again, they have guests. All of them, their garages are built out, so they don't park in their garages because they're all built into workshops. So I'm just concerned. I've had my house since nineteen eighty-six, and it's really hard for just our male woman to navigate down our street because so many people are parked on our street. So just adding more parking in that neighborhood concerns me. If we had a fire, I don't know how a fire truck would get through. So just wanted to say that. I also wanted to comment as far as the water goes. That front, that top part of Hill Street always is flooded. I have to wear my rain boots to walk from my house down to Fairfax whenever it rains, so I know I've always been grateful that the vacant parcel could take some of that water in, but I'm concerned with removing the trees and then having that building there, plus the building that John is proposing. He's gonna build up his house at a second floor and at, you know, extend the house. So that's gonna be more more rainwater that's gonna not go into the ground. And then my really, my question was about the story poles is, I am, this is small compared to what everybody else has talked about, but I am concerned about my view shed because I have a little house, nine hundred square feet, and two houses right smack next to me. So my only view shed is in my backyard where John's house is. And so if, when his house is built up and this other house is built, especially being painted black, I'm gonna lose all my view shed. So I, when I talked to John about this some time ago, he said there would be story poles that would be put up so I could see how much of my view shed would be removed by the house on Hill. And so I don't know when those story poles would go up, but I would love to have that information. Thank you very much. Oh, I just wanted to also add that I've called Linda a few times and asked her questions, and she's been so helpful, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So do we. Any other? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Ivy Christensen, and my family and I live at one-twenty-seven Oak Knoll Avenue, which is just down Ramona and on the corner. And I just wanted to come up here and come tonight and show my support for John and his project. John has been completely transparent throughout the entire process. We've come to know John and Lindsay well and know that John is an accomplished architect. But more importantly, like he's nurtured the idea of this project and has been completely transparent with all of us around, and I really appreciate that. I think it speaks to the fact that he cares for the neighborhood, he cares for the neighbors, and he's not doing anything maliciously, and he's not doing anything without thought. My family and I are excited about the thoughtfulness that John has put into this concept thus far, and we're excited for the opportunity that this project brings to our neighborhood and the community as a whole. Based off of the beautiful and thoughtful design that he's put into this, but also with the fact that I know John spoke about how difficult it has been to buy a home in this, you know, really desirable neighborhood as a young family, and we were able to do that, and adding more opportunity for others to come and enjoy this area and build their homes and build their families is something that we really look forward to. So we support that, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Hey, everybody. I'm Colton Christensen, so the better half of the woman that just spoke. But just wanted to pass along my support as well. I'll keep this really brief. Couldn't be more excited for this project. I think all of us in this room know that we need housing in this beautiful area, and I couldn't be more excited for just opportunities for young families like ours to get to participate in that. As a neighbor of John's, I've become a friend of John's and have been really, really impressed with his thoughtfulness over the issues that neighbors have. There's a lot of complications here. We all know that. He knows that. But he's taken a great amount of time and energy to make folks comfortable, be considerate, and go about it in the right way. As a professional, he's an architect. You couldn't ask for a better person or professional to engage in this project, so fully support it, and I hope, I hope we can keep it moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone on Zoom?
We do have one hand online. Riley. Riley, please go ahead.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Riley Hurd. I am a local land use attorney, and I specialize in state housing laws. I've also handled a unfortunate number of property line disputes. So I want to start by highlighting what Linda said, that the property line issue is a civil matter, and the town is not the arbiter of what is or isn't the property line. But that being said, the town did engage its own town surveyor, GJ Harmonia, who wrote a letter after reviewing both of the surveys extensively. This July seventeenth letter concludes with the sentence that says, "In conclusion, I will state that on review of this new information, I agree with the Oberkamper map on file." So just for clarity, that map is the survey submitted by the applicant. So even though you're not being asked to weigh in, the impartial third-party town surveyor did review both and agrees with the applicant's survey. So what's really going on here is we have a vacant lot, and folks have had the benefit of living next to this lot for some time. But the zoning says this is where a house goes, and we're going through the housing element, we've got the state mandates, and this is where lots like this start getting built. And to Frank Egger's point, you know, this is what affordable housing looks like in Marin County. Twelve hundred square feet, not thirty-two hundred square feet. Very briefly about the drainage issues, there's a very good reason that the applicant's engineer focused on the flows created by this home only. That is because the case law, the codes, they're all very clear that you are responsible for the new water flow that you create. And in this case, the engineer has proven that the new flow and a little more actually, so it will do better than existing conditions, will be contained. It does sound like the roads and other things have issues, but this house will be fully contained. And it's always interesting when other folks who live in houses that are already built that also create water runoff kind of point to the blank lot. So what we would ask tonight is, it's been many, many months, over seven months, since this project was deemed complete, and we would ask that you approve in accordance with the staff's recommendation, this very modest home, and I'm available for any questions you may have about any of the legal issues, but we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I see no other hands on Zoom.
Alright. Did you? No, you're good. That's alright. We've already heard from every.
It's a three-bedroom.
So if there's no more public comments, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'll go. We've gotten a lot of information in the last day or so that may not be available to the community. I'm not sure when the corners were marked in the field to show where the building was gonna be. I'm concerned that we don't have story poles up for this project, because it is a small lot. Story poles would help identify and make it more concrete to the public. As to the plans of visual, you know, people were asking about story poles. There are story poles set in the plans. We've had story poles on other properties and applications, and they were, you know, in areas where we had trees and a tree permit request coming forward. So that's a concern I have. I'm not sure that enough information that's come forward recently and the lack of story poles where they were in the application has made it easy for the community to look at this project, since it is a concern. I've looked at the the front of the property on the plans and to the comment made, I think in the staff report, it's not really broken up as far as the design. So it kind of shows this just block on the front. So I have some concerns on this application, both from the standpoint of no story poles right now, and you know, the information that's come forward in the last few days that may not be accessible to everyone in the community that may be helpful for them. And I'm not sure how others feel about that.
I thought with the waiver of the story pole requirement, there was a assertion that the story poles would get in the way of the overhead wires. Was that, was I mistaken? Power lines or something?
That's what the applicant provided you information, that his contractor he consulted wasn't able to erect some of the story poles because of the location of the power lines and the trees.
So I guess my question to you, Chair Swift, is, you know, if that's a safety issue, what you're how you would recommend that the applicant work around that somehow? I don't understand what you want them to do if.
Well, I think, I think one of the things is, you know, with this property, there are power lines that go from the utility pole to thirty-two. And we don't have many, I don't think we've had many applications where that's been a situation for story poles and concerns, but we've had story poles in areas where there have been trees, and that seemed not to be a concern. You know, the property on Tamil Pious is one where you know, we had the same issue with trees that were requested to be removed, and they were up there and they were tagged. But we had story poles in that area, and that was a hillside. So I'm a little concerned that we're not showing story poles that would help us and help the community.
Yeah, to start with the latest part, I think the story poles, I think the power line that crosses that would affect the, that would be the northwest corner of the building. The rest is hindered by trees, but I have the same understanding. They sometimes set up poles with a flag on top. They just can't run the lines across them. The question there is, if the story pole doesn't fit under the power line, then the building wouldn't either, but I presume it's only the supply for the neighboring home. It's not a high-voltage line. It's just a regular service line.
I don't think so, but you can double-check that with the applicant. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of last-minute information that might not be available to the public. That's a concern. I have, for the building itself, the, it's a very small lot. The design utilizes it to the maximum it can. It's the exact maximum FAR. It is the maximum height, so there's nothing wrong with that. That's what you need to do to make a small lot to work. But for the two variances, I think the parking component of it, it's common. There's a lot of homes that do that in that neighborhood. There's a lot of small lots. There's a lot of parking in the side setbacks. There's also a lot of homes that would not be compliant currently, but that doesn't matter so much. The concern I have is the side setback, and that only occurs on one side. The, so that would be the east, the sloped east property line. Uh, the, the slope east property line. Um, this is a greenfield. It is, nothing, nothing has ever been built there before. Um, it's a flat lot. You can design anything you want. So. I cannot find a ground for a variance to do that. There's no reason in shrink it. The building gets smaller, understood. It is already small, but it's still a very small lot. Um, so that's the only concern, the real concern that I have other than that we have that last minute. Information that's not there. No story polls. We have renderings that have not been uh shown. Um, but that's more procedural thing, I think. But we have to have a, a reason. For variance to. Get too close to the property line.
Any other? Comments?
Um, yeah, just. To clarify, the. Side yard variance you're talking about is the smaller one, which is abutting his other property. I just. From the, you know, you're the, the architect. I just want to know if there are other concerns with respect to side yard variances besides. You know. Uh, disagreement between neighbors on proximity of houses. There's other reasons we want to maintain a minimum of five feet. Uh, in a situation like this where the person is on both sides of the line.
Well, no, I think the. Yeah, this, it, it's not, it's not about where, what the other buildings do or what is the correct property line or not, that, that's a separate matter. Um, assuming that these property lines are the way they are. Then on the east side, the, the slope, the angles property line, the building crosses through the minimum five feet setback at three points. Um. And. Why? I, there's no hardship. It doesn't need to. But it would get a smaller building. I mean, I understand that, but, but the, so there's no precedent. I mean, you can't, because of. Other homes that were built before you. I mean, I don't, I cannot find. A. Reason to grant a variance because there is no particular hardship to not design it differently. And comply. Um, and as I said, for the parking, that's a different story because that is something that is common in that neighborhood. Um, and throughout and um, I, I have a different. Approach to that. Um, anyway, that was my, my logic there.
And I think to answer your question directly, my uh. The value of the setback. Is safety. Uh, fire spread. There's, I believe there is a little garage or something on that east. Edge that's adjacent. So there's that and firemen being able to sort of pass between buildings also if there's a fence there. That's one thing as well as just uh. Creating uh openness. Between structures and making sure that there are view corridors. There is sort of space between the bulk. Those are the two primary values that I think of with setback.
And just to be clear, we're talking about a difference of one foot. Uh, a little over a foot. Foot and a. Inch and a half.
Yeah, that's correct. Three foot eight instead of five feet. And three eleven instead of five and four two instead of five. It seems like peanuts, but it's. Already very tight. Everything is maxed out and that's okay to do, but then you can get more.
Okay, this is where I forgot. You said the uh. The correct dimension was three foot eight, not three foot ten and a half. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can I ask the applicant a direct question at this time? Point of order. I, I'd just like to give you the opportunity to tell us why is it necessary to infringe on the setback?
Um, so the reason I'm asking for a side yard setback is uh. Uh, setback variance is because there's precedent um. Within the neighborhood on all of these older homes uh to be closer than the normal allowable setbacks. Um, in the case of this house specifically, um, yes, everything is maxed out. You are correct. Um. It is uh, a pie, you know, a tr- a trapezoidal shaped lot, kind of a pie shape and uh. And so it breaks that side setback. There's a slight, a total of six square feet or something like that. I think I'd have to look back at my uh. Initial variance application that overhangs that property line. It's a very small amount and dealing with extremely tight dimensions on the interior to make it, you know, a si- a, a small three bed, two bath home work. Something for a small family to work, and these are the minimum dimensional criteria. I'm asking for it against my own property line. Which I fully accept. Um, and would support because it's against my own property line. And so um, I, I think it's appropriate. Um, and I've, you know, use the same logic on, on many other houses I've designed in other, uh, other communities. Um, because there is uh, both precedent for it. And there is something specific about the lot that makes designing a home similar to others possible. So take away the, the setback variance. It makes the dimensions even tighter to design. That home, a small family home of which other people on other lots. Uh, mostly can, you know, more conforming in terms of shape get to enjoy. Does that make sense? Is that logic kind of makes sense there?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna pile on now. Because um, now, now I've sort of tried to dig down in and I, I appreciate the idea of creating a compact uh, living space. On a usable lot. Um. However. When I look at your floor plans, which I was expecting to find some sort of minimum size dimensions for rooms that you needed that width on the size of your lot. Uh, I don't think your living room has to be that wide. It could be longer and skinnier. Uh, I think your kitchen could also be wa- shorter and fatter. Uh, so I think that. Maybe it's not a truly sort of utilitarian reason. As mu- much as just a willful uh. Ask.
So I think. There's some questions and concerns about the variance on that side. Um. We've gotten a lot of information in the last few days. That the public hasn't. Seen. Um. We don't have, I would really like to see story polls. Out there. Um. I'm not clear on. What story polls would be. Able to be put up outside of the power lines, which. You know, power lines over a lot isn't that. Normal for us to see. Story polls, but I think having whatever story polls we could have. Up there. Um, and as I've said, I've had, we've had them before and lots that have had. Um, trees to be removed. That were coming before us as well, and that didn't seem to be. A concern. Um. I don't know. There's a concern about the variance. On that one side. Um, and I don't know if, if the rest of the commissioners would. Want to see if it was possible to. Change that. So that the variance wasn't. Required for that side or wasn't being asked for that side. Um. I think um, and you all haven't spoken to the front. Of the house and whether. Um, it should be broken up a little bit as far as design. Uh, you know, I. Would appreciate your opinions on that, but I would um. With that, I would maybe. Consider asking to continue this for some of those. Um, concerns, but I wanted to get feedback from you all on that.
No, I, I like the design. I, I um. I don't have a particular issue with that. No, no, it's, you know. Taste and style, you can argue about it along, but it's, well, it's thought out and so uh, there's no concern there. And the setback itself, the, you know, it's a small amount, but it's a precedent. Just because it was done in the past that way, doesn't mean you can't keep repeating it because then we could just as well have no rules. Um, it's unfortunate. I hate to say it, but I think it's. It should be five feet. Because I can't find a ground really to. Uh, to, to take a different look at that. Um. So that responding to it, I, I don't have a concern about the design.
Uh, I'm generally in support of the project. I think it's a very well that designed building. I, I think that. The justification to ask us to sort of create an exception for you uh, with the regard to the side setback. Uh, you know, I, I don't see a reason for it really. So I think I'm in agreement with you, Commissioner. Uh. I, I actually uh, think that. Rather than. Doing as the attorney said over the phone um. And doing what's required by code with regard to the water uh, on the lot. If you told us, hey, you know, I did that, but I went a little extra. Because I want to be a good neighbor. Uh, that's the kind of thing that would help us say, you know, he's being a good neighbor, maybe he does. Deserve a variance or something, right? It's not a hardship, but if you're going to the extra mile to, to help the community. It'd go a long way. Um, but I, I am, I actually am very familiar with the neighborhood um, and the water. Uh, this winter that was in that neighborhood and it's a big issue on your site. And these are all real concerns. Uh, but in general, I'm in support of the project.
Yeah, I can go. Um. I. Am generally in, in support of the project. You know, I. Hear what you're saying with respect to the side yard variance and not. Granting an exception and I am, I'm also thinking about the Tamil Pies uh. Project. Um, and just on the story polls, I remember it on, in the first of, I think, three meetings on that, there was a note on the story polls not going up until the day before the meeting. Um. Uh, um, but. But there, you know, we talked about. Um. Appreciating using such a difficult lot to develop because of all the existing natural constraints. And. That's really what I'm considering here with, with regards to the side yard variance as the reason, you know. It's an odd shaped lot. It's already so small. And if the design is otherwise where we're thinking. You're really making the most out of this. Property that you can. I think it's not necessarily such a huge precedent on this. Everybody gets this. Little carve out to a side yard variance, just given the specific factors here of. Of the odd shape and owning the abutting. Parcel. So you know, you just. For, you know, plenty of variances and for plenty of other things, we take con- the concerns of the neighbors very seriously. Um. And for a side yard variance, I think we normally would take the concern of the neighbor that is being encroached upon. Um, their opinion on the matter and here. Where it's the person, I don't think that that's a circumstance that's going to happen very often. And I think if the town can benefit from the person sort of being encroaching on their own space. To better develop the lot. I, you know, I'd be in favor of the project going forward if the, if the issue is that it could be designed better. Um. And. The better design would also not need the variance. You know, I, I totally hear that, but. But my, my look at this project is I think it's. The type of, of development of unused property that, that I would like to encourage.
Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, um. I think I can go either way. Huh? Uh. You know, I, I. Am not, um. My gut is not opposed to. The three foot eight. Uh, side yard setback in this um. Particular circumstance. Uh, because it's, you know, the encroached upon neighbor is the applicant. But uh, I also have nothing against a, a reducing the size. Um. So I think I can go either way. Uh, I think uh. You know, I don't know what uh, the reduction, I don't. Know if you guys have done, you know, what the square footage would be with that five foot reduction on that side of the house, but um. Or, you know. Whatever. That, that small narrowing. Uh. So I, I, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other.
Let me go back here and see if. Um. Their support for a continuance to get. Story polls up and to give time to um. The community to see some of the information that was provided to us to be, and maybe go out and see those. Markers in the field. Um. Since we have the ability to do that, I don't know if there's um. Support for looking at a redesign to get that variance. Not needed.
I think continuance could definitely let the uh applicant evaluate whether they really need that variance.
Agree.
Okay. Okay, then I would.
Go ahead. Just said you're gonna entertain a motion.
I'm gonna enter, yes. Thank you. I'm gonna entertain a motion to continue this. Um. Application to the next. Meeting so that the applicant can look at the variance. Um, needed on that side. So we can get some story polls up to give the community time. To look at the material that's been provided and then to go on the field and, and see where the markers are.
I have a question. Uh, would, would the applicant need to agree to this proposed continuance?
Uh, no, I think we're good for one, one month. Next, next month, if you were gonna continue it again, they'd, there'd have to be an agreement to, for a continuance.
So I think that was my motion. Did I make a motion? Yes. Thank you. I make a mo- I make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting. In. August. Um, so that the applicant has um, time to review the requirement and the need for the variance on that side. From a redesign perspective to see if he really needs that. Um. To get some story polls up to give the community time to look at additional material. That's been provided and to go out and look in the field to find those. Markers.
What do you mean by markers? What, what do you say?
Are there not markers? Are there not markers on the property to show?
He spray painted the corners of the buildings.
Okay.
The corner of the building. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So to see that. All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Motion carries.
Now, does the applicant get something from you identifying that? All right. Great.
I send a letter of action out.
All right. Thank you. So our next item is 10 Court Lane, application 2319.
Okay, so this project is just for a remodel of an existing 1,460 square foot, three bedroom, two bathroom, single family residence. They're not expanding the living space square footage. They're just going to rework, rework the floor plan to get in an extra half bath and to get in a laundry room to kind of do some work on the front. What do you want to call it? Porch area. Relocate the front access stairway and the front door and then relocate the the rear entry into the rear master bedroom to the, to the west east side to access a new deck that's going to go off, a very small new deck that's going to go off that side. And it requires the approval of a minimum and combined side yard setback variance and a design review permit. Because the project, the project, they're also going to replace and change the roof line on more than half of the back of the house, right? So that results in it being a 50% remodel. But the new roof isn't going to encroach any closer to the property line than the roof already extends now. And, you know, it's, it's going to improve the design of the house. So we think it brings it more into compliance with the criteria set forth in the design review section. It also requires a conditional use permit, but it's not increasing the square footage of the house. So this, this did get a little confusing for staff because they went through a while ago for a more major remodel and expansion of the house, right? That included reconstruction of the garage. So the garage is almost done now and the, the previously approved tree permit, right, is partially finished. They took out the one tree, but they didn't take out the front tree. But those are already approved with the tree permit. So this really is just, it's just going to make some improvements to the property. They're going to rebuild the patio cover that needs some work at the rear of the property. Nothing is extending further into the creek setback than already exists. And so we're supporting the project and we can make the findings and we're recommending that you approve it by adopting the resolution that we've put forth.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
This quick one to confirm, it's basically a replacement in kind. Yes.
Except for the roof that's going up.
Right.
Yeah.
You have it in horizontally. Nothing happens. Right.
They're adding the little rear deck, but that's out of the setback.
Correct. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come up? Does anyone, yeah. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? All right, then I'm going to open up public comment. Is there any one in the audience that would like to speak to this? No, anyone on Zoom?
There are no hairs. There are no hands online. Chair Swift?
All right, thanks. And I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'm in support of the project.
I'm in support of the project too.
I am as well.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion. Motion to approve resolution 2023-17, resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application 2319 for a conditional use permit, minimum and combined side set yard, side yard setback variances and a design review permit for the 50% remodel of the existing single family residence at 10 Court Lane.
Second.
No, no.
I was going to say.
I think there's only one correction on the reso.
Where I made you.
Acting chair. Yeah.
Yeah, but there's also some corrections to the staff report that I've already been advised about, but we don't need to go into them. I shall make the correction.
So with that correction, can we have a roll call?
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Motion carries. There's a 10 day appeal process. Thank you.
Now, what's the public's here for and before you decide what you're going to?
Did you, Frank, did you want to speak on any particular item or you're just? Okay. I was hoping I was going to suggest that we could put that off till the next meeting as well as the minutes, but if we have someone here to speak to it, let's go for it.
So my staff report, I included some information from the City Clerks Association of California guidelines about minutes and there's just a shift. The council's already made it with their minutes to try to make them briefer now that everything is televised and recorded and people can actually watch the entire meeting again. And I'm going to just be honest here that our minutes clerk is, is, wants to retire and cut back. And she's indicated that if we continue to do the long lengthy minutes, she's going to, she's going to step, she's going to quit. And so right now we don't have a planning director. We haven't had one for over a year. I do not have time to be trying to hire a minutes clerk. So if you aren't willing to go to the scaled back minutes permanently, I would ask that you do it until we get a full staff on board. And the planning director will have time to try to hire someone new. She, the current minutes clerk has indicated that she won't leave us in the lurch, but I think you know, it depends on, you know, if we can scale it back, she'll stay with us when we get a full staff, maybe we can hire a new minutes clerk, but I've been through hiring minutes clerks before. They're not easy to find. People don't know how to do it and the training, it's, it takes a long time to get them up to speed, to get them to know how to do it. So that's really what's driving this. I'm recommending that you go with the, and, and just to be clear, it's not, we're not asking you to go to action minutes where it's just the motion and a second. There's still the indication of what the, what the public's concerns were. They just don't necessarily call out everybody's name, right? They say public, public comment addressed, you know, drainage issues, you know, so it still covers that. It doesn't, what it doesn't do is it doesn't call out each of you, each of your concerns. It's not going to go say Commissioner Jansen. It's going to represent what the commission's final action was and what the, the comments made that got them to that action, right? So it's not going to eliminate any kind of idea of what happened at the meeting. And then there's the recorded, there's the TV recording, right, that people can fall back on if they really need to know what happened. And we have actually, I've had several attorneys, town attorneys say it's actually better to have less in your minutes. It creates less problems if things end up going sideways. So that's my spiel.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, you mentioned that the town council has already done this. So I assume that's not the resolution about audio recordings, but that the town council has already moved to the types of minutes.
I spoke with the town clerk and she said they're already doing very scaled back minutes. And I mean, I think so.
I just wanted to confirm if, you know, the minutes that have been available for.
Now, I have to say, I have to say that I haven't gone through and read a bunch of council minutes, but she explained to me, you know, how she, what they're, what they look like.
They look a lot less full than, than we get. So I just wanted to confirm that that's generally what.
That's what we're working towards. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, I'm curious about memorializing the decision making because of the availability of the video on YouTube, I guess. You know, I, we don't know how long the videos that are up on YouTube will be maintained, but I guess we have the recording included on our website just by including a link to YouTube, right?
Right. And you're not getting rid of minutes. You're just scaling them back.
All right. I mean, you know, and it sounds like the 10 year retention standard for the audio recording. You know, I, I, I don't know. I mean, one of the things that I think we've traditionally had a hard time with is memorializing decisions from the past and being able to access them. And, you know, so I'm just more curious about the, you know, the retention of minutes. Are they all subject to that 10 year limit?
Oh, no, we keep, we, we keep the minutes permanently, the written minutes. Yeah. Now, at some point, I believe that, you know, because we're running out of space at Town Hall, the written minutes will be scanned to the computers, you know, we don't have space for, right? We're running out of space at Town Hall. So the, we may not have the paper copies, but we'll keep the copies, you know, we'll keep the minutes forever.
Any other questions for staff before I open it up to public comment? Mr. Egger?
Thank you, Frank Egger, Metta Way. Quite often applications before the planning commissioner, town council are held in quasi judicial hearings. Staff says they're going to keep records for 10 years. It's in a staff report. And for instance, Fairfax's proposed housing element right now that they've sent up to Sacramento has, has, has recommended 34 units on the open space of the Fairfax Hills subdivision, which was approved on a 3-2 council vote back in the 1980s. So if this policy were in effect, you know, 30, 30 some odd years ago, would we still have those records? I wonder. The the problem is, and in fact, I, I, you know, I made that presentation to the town council, but they didn't pay much attention to it. There was an actual court order that set, set the density on that Fairfax Hills subdivision and set the conditions. And the town council paid no attention to it. The town attorney paid no attention to it and they approved the housing element that went to Sacramento with 34 units on, on, on what's private open space. So i- if there's a policy like this in effect and it's a quasi judicial hearing, if it ends up in court some years down the road, how, how's that record going to be put back together? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I know the town council minutes are all in, in thick minute books, heavy, heavy minute books in the town save. And a planning commission minutes are down there in, in kind of a loosely folder. And there's probably, let's see, let's see, since, since 31, so there's 69 and 22, there's 23, 69 and 23. That's what's that about? 82 years of minutes. But I, I think for certain items that, that you need to have pretty some detailed minutes and, and keep those records. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is still on. My name's Todd Greenberg. I live in downtown Fairfax. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's really refreshing to attend a meeting where people are openly discussing things in a reasonable manner and the public gets to hear that. Wow. That's so nice. I feel for staff that I know is overworked here. But I think a lot of times there are ways that things can be done more efficiently and more cost effectively than they're being done in this town. And I'd like to offer up a potential better way that this might be done and maintain what a lot of people want to see in government, which is transparent government, which I think is really, really important for the record and to avoid unnecessary legal costs to the town and to other individuals. Having a good indexed, researchable, detailed record, like having a good library or having good laws is essential to being able to move forward efficiently. So I understand that sometimes staff might not be available, but I'd like to ask whoever might be in charge of this to look at whether you could use a transcription service that is very competitive. There's lots of transcription services. In fact, even when the meetings are on YouTube, you can get a transcript, but it's not a very efficient transcript and I don't know whether it's downloadable. But to me, more detail is better. And I think it saves staff time actually when somebody needs to go back or your time, when you need to go back and see what was said. And it's important for the people to know what each person that is on the commission has said. I think there's probably a way, if it were to be researched, to get a full transcript and then send that full transcript to a transcript service that would provide minutes. And so in the staff report, there are three types of minutes that are discussed. There are summary meeting minutes. There are summary action meeting minutes, and there are brief summary minutes. So it gets a little confusing as to what that is, but as I understand it, the recommendation has been to move towards more brief minutes and I'm against that. I'm for more transparent government. I think it's important for Fairfax, as Frank said, for the record. And for everybody's ease of use. So I would be for actually as much detail as possible, which as I understand it, but I'd like to throw the question up and have you discuss it a little bit. Is that summary is the most detailed meeting minutes that are available that I would like to see, that I think Frank would like to see, that I think other Fairfax people would like to see? Is that what's being done now? Are those defined under the law or in the lexicon as summary meeting minutes? Because I would encourage you to do the most detailed meeting minutes possible. And I think there's probably an efficient And I think there's probably an efficient, cost effective way to do it. And I would volunteer if somebody else doesn't have time to help you find a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, as a member of the public, may I make a comment? We do actually have transcripts of the planning commission meetings. I turned on transcript at this year and there is actually someone, a guest who watches us who turns on the closed captioning. I did that so people who are hard of hearing can see a side transcript of our meetings. You can't see it here. I can see it on my computer. I can, after the meeting, show you how it shows to other people on the computer. I don't want to interrupt the recording at this time. But there is a transcript file available to people. However, it is like a voice to type kind of file. So occasionally it gets words wrong and things are misspelled. It's not a perfect audio file, but there is a transcript written file that is created with the Zoom now at the end of the video recording and I can help point that out to staff where that is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No. Considering the time of the evening and in all honesty, I haven't had a chance to look at this because I've been working the other projects. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is just bring this back at the next meeting.
That's fine with me, but I just want to warn you guys that you've got like five more Comcast cabinets coming up that are going to be complete any day now. You've got a big project on Barker, so I just we need to try to minimize the number of things that get continued snowballing.
I understand, but I, but I think this won't take that much time when we bring it back, if that's okay with everyone else.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I just want to say that from my perspective, the most detailed way of preserving what goes on here is through the video. You know, and I have no objection to shortening the minutes starting tonight and moving forward with that, knowing that for the moment, at least, we are preserving these YouTube videos. My concern is only that someday, hopefully long in the future, YouTube videos may not be as readily accessible permanently as, you know, I believe they currently are. So that would be sort of a longer term project, whether to combine things like the transcript that Tamara is talking about or it's Pamela, sorry, I'm tired. Or you know, the, the, the printed minutes that get preserved in in a binder or a loose leaf file or a safe or whatever. So I just think from my perspective, we wouldn't need to continue this. We could, you know, I'd be happy to move to approve staff's request.
I would still like to have it.
Yeah.
Just so I can go through this if it's okay with everyone.
Yeah.
Go through it at the next meeting. It shouldn't take that long.
I feel similarly to Mimi, but I do have a lot of opinions I'd like to get out. I don't want to take that time out at this meeting and would be happy to go to the next.
Thank you. We don't need a motion to do that as a discussion item, do we? Thank you. I would like to ask the rest of the commission if they're okay with continuing the minutes from the May meeting to the next meeting. Okay, and then for commissioner comments and questions, I had one I wanted to bring up. You know, we've talked about the housing element. And it's been a while since we've had any, we've worked on it at all or any elements of it, nor have we had any update to the planning commission. So I would like to get, if we can, an update at the next meeting on the status of the housing element, the timeline and what the expectation is that's going to come for the planning commission, because there's going to be some items coming to us as a, as a part of this process. And it would be nice to get some information on what to expect before it actually shows up on our door. That was my only question. Got anyone else?
I didn't have anything, but just to follow up on that, it would be good if we could hear on that from or just also very briefly hear from the person who is consulting, sort of stepping into David Chu's. I don't think that we've really had heard from him at, yeah, heard from him at one of these meetings. Just a general update.
I will check that with Heather because my understanding is he's helping, he's, he's like court, he's helping Diet Batia, but he's not really doing a lot of the work. And so it might be better to have someone from Diet Batia or whatever. I hope I'm saying their name right.
I would, yeah. And and you can find out what the best would, what the best individual or group would be to give us that information. That'd be great. Right? Does anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I think we got everything right. All right. Hey.
Move to adjourn.
I could. Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Aye.